Okay, welcome, everybody. Those in the audience and those on YouTube. Today is Monday, June 24th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow my pledge.
No, you can't.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands where each liberty and justice for all.
Forgot we can't. Thanks, everyone.
Tell them to be quiet out there.
Cinda, will you ask them to move?
Or be quiet?
Or I'll go ask them. Shut up.
Boy, there is a voice of authority. Okay, everybody's had a chance to look at the agendas. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, entertain a motion approved.
I'll make motion approved the agenda for June 24th.
Second.
With the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're gonna get right on into our agenda. This is an action item. These are the claims, board of the claims. I didn't see any junior college.
So on one of the billings, though, it had a junior college of $1,500.
That would be when the schools submit for the money that we pay back to them. So that would be a billing from CSI, I believe, as soon as.
So we are paying on it. It just.
They do it twice a year. They bill us the fall semester and then they, this spring semester.
Okay.
Yeah, so these were, junior college would be like new applications.
Yeah, there are no new applications.
Rita, I only had one question. And it was the water bill for the annex was five something. Do we get reimbursed by the city?
Half of it.
Half that, okay. Just wanna make sure that was straight in my little brain.
And there is a change to the overall general. It's a hundred dollars less than what is, was on your original. The payment for Liberty Mutual Surety Bond for PNC was, it was already paid on the 28th of May.
That's why we got this.
Yeah, that's why you got that.
Okay.
Out of the OHV fund, they're buying Fusion bumpers. Which division is doing that?
It'd be the sheriff's office, Commissioner Mopkin.
Are those a want or a need, Doug? Do you know?
Um, I believe that, I wish the sheriff was here. I don't know. My understanding it is a need.
It was for a winch bumper?
For one of the recreational patrol vehicles. Winch bumper?
Yeah, they put, they.
Oh, I know, yeah.
One of those.
And it was specifically for one of the recreation patrol vehicles.
Okay. And then we also had emergency responder services. Sixty, six thousand, six hundred and seventy?
Is that who it's under? Sorry, it's split out a little different for me now.
Yeah, which one is it? What's number?
Oh, it's underwaterways.
Waterways, total was 12, 9.
Under 138, 000899.
Bear with me one moment.
Sheriff, do you know anything about emergency responder services for 6,670 by any chance?
Uh, that would probably, was that coded under Waterways?
Uh huh.
Yeah, that's for, the Waterways truck together.
That's correct. It was a, um, an outfitting of the patrol, the Waterways vehicle.
The vehicle or the boat?
The vehicle, looks like, the.
Yeah, the, I think they had gray Dodges down there.
What did they, what did they put on a Waterways boat? I mean, a Waterways truck, 6,670?
It's patrol truck. That's underwater, Waterways pays for it.
Okay.
So it's actually a patrol truck. It's just Waterways using it for.
It's his, it's his tow boat. It's the bigger truck to tow the boats, but it's also a patrol truck. So it's for Kevin.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Full patrol.
Then the Fusion bumpers, those are, those are needed? Those weren't just upgrading because we want to? It was something we needed?
They're all for the backcountry and everything, yeah.
Is it on a truck, Kevin, or is it on a, uh, side of a site?
No, it's on a pickup.
On a pickup, okay.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Okey.
That was my question.
I don't have anything else. Okay, so I entertain a motion then to pay. Make a motion that we pay the claims, vote orders for June 24th.
Second.
And a motion to second pay the claims and board of the claims. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The board order?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just bring it up when you get it.
Yep, it's on my desk.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, we're gonna go on down to our agenda. These are all elected official reports. First one up is assessor Sue. Good morning.
Today is the last day to appeal. They have until 5 o'clock. So far, we have 11 appeals filed, six exemption appeals, and five assessment appeals. I suspect that will change by the end of the day drastically. BOE will begin on Wednesday. And I'm trying to schedule all the 602Bs on Wednesday. And I've got 602Cs on both Thursday and Friday. And then we'll fit in hopefully the property assessment appeals.
Throughout the process?
Throughout the, yeah, so.
So you do think we'll take all three days, then? You only had like six of them or something like?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, so all three days.
I'm shooting to be, hopefully, we can have everything scheduled and be done by Friday. Or on Friday, I should say. We'll just see what we get today. But we are shooting, get it all done this week.
I sent you one that I, we got this morning from a guy, McCall.
I was just reading that.
I sent that to you. He may wanna notify me, he can appeal.
I forwarded that to Noreen. Um, I didn't read the whole thing because I needed to come up here, so. Uh, but we'll take care of him. We are currently waiting. We have not received the actual appeal from Quaker Hill, Trinity Pines, YMCA, or Pilgrim Cove, and they've all indicated to us that they are going to appeal. In the count that I gave you, I was counting Quaker Hill and Trinity Pines. Uh, but I have not counted YMCA or Pilgrim Cove. I don't have either of those two on the schedule just yet, so. For scheduling purposes, I went ahead and scheduled Quaker Hill and Trinity Pines, even though I haven't received the appeal just yet.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Um, I thought it was a real good article in the Star News that you had put in. I think that really helps people kinda understand what's going on.
Yep, Max did a good job.
It was very positive. I like how it was written and.
Yeah, Max does a good job.
That's good.
Most times, we agree with them anyway.
Most of the time. Any more questions for Sue?
Uh, I'm good.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, clerk.
Commissioners, good morning. Hope you're doing very brief. Just to let you know, the clerk's office is still working on budgets. As the commissioners are fully aware, the workshop that we had last Tuesday that we weren't able to complete, we are going to be looking at those budget expenditures this afternoon. And those are specifically ones related, directly related to the commissioners. Uh, so just to share that with you, our office has still been, um, working diligently on the budget. Uh, our office has also been working on our, we went live with our new recording software. Uh, so we are working out all of the issues with that. Uh, but my deputy recorder, Robin Elliott, has been doing a phenomenal job. Um, putting in service tickets with Eagle Recording if there are any issues. Uh, but our go-live has been successful and we are, we have transitioned away from our, from computer arts. Our next goal, though, is to have those records online. The public title companies are really adamant wanting that. But we still have some things that we need to work through before we officially can put those online. Honestly, I'm hoping probably for another 60 days. And then we'll be able to have all of our recorded documents online, once again, available for the public to view with the guarantee that any personal information will be redacted.
So how are the title companies doing it now, Doug? They just come in and ask for it?
Correct.
You guys gotta dig it out?
That's correct. They're submitting a public records request if there are specific documents that they need. And then we are responding.
Well, this is gonna save some work down the road.
Will. It will allow the deputy recorder to focus on some additional duties.
Is Kirsten gonna be able to take some training before the election in this?
Yes, she's, I can share with you. Um, she is going to be, hopefully, what our goal is, is to have her become a certified election official. That takes approximately three years to do. The first opportunity for her is going to be the second week of July, I believe. It's the first week or second week of July. Boise is actually going to be hosting an event through the, I apologize. I don't know what the official title is, but it is a nationwide certification. It's to become an elect, a certified elected official, or election official. And she has, we've conversed about it. We've talked about it. She is interested and she is going to be attending this training the first week of July.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I know, Rachel, you're going to training. So if you need training money, then over budget or whatever.
We are gonna be utilizing the elections budget, which does have funding to, for her to attend. We're excited about this opportunity. I think she understands the amount of work that it's gonna take. Uh, but she does, she has expressed an interest and we've signed her up for the, this course that's taking place in Boise.
That's awesome.
So Commissioner Mopkin, yes, I appreciate you asking that question. It is our goal to have her become certified election official.
That's awesome.
Yep.
But again.
Just one quick question, Doug, because I didn't tally it on my head. But did our workman's comp go up? It's like it's more, did we figure that in the budget?
We have, yeah. Um, we have figured that in for next fiscal year's budget. Yes, sir.
And I forgot to ask.
Go ahead.
Scott ordered, it looked like three chairs, armchairs, best reception armchairs. You have any idea why we took it out of order?
Oh, I saw.
Because they, did it come out of pilt?
So.
It was for the, for Lake Forkwood.
Not to look, Commissioner Mopkin, I don't know. I mean, a question frame when he comes in.
I forgot about that.
They didn't need more chairs down at Lake Fork.
Yeah, okay.
So Doug?
Sir.
If we lose an election official like that, does it fall on you?
Uh, well, technically, it falls on me anyway, right? It's my responsibility to make sure that the elections run smoothly, that everything is, all the steps are followed. It is difficult for myself and Gabby to run an election.
Sure.
We identify that as a need. Uh, and so Commissioner Thompson, we created an elected, excuse me. We created this position and it's a shared position with the treasurer's office. So she works in both offices. So I guess to, to answer your question, ultimately, it falls on my responsibility anyway. Unfortunately, it is difficult. It has become more difficult for myself and my chief deputy to create the ballot, to do, to set up an election from the start until the end. We definitely need an individual to do that with the supervision from us, so.
Would it take, I mean, would it be who was to have two people that have that experience? Take it, seeing that it takes three years?
Uh, for, to become a certified? The reason is, is the, the training is only offered about once a year. And there's different, different courses that an individual has to take. So there's, I think there's 20 separate courses that an individual has to take. And it's only offered usually, now I'm understanding your question. It's only offered once a year. Um, usually, it's offered in, uh, this is the first time ever that it's been offered in Boise. So we're definitely grateful for that. But typically, it's offered in Detroit is a location where they have it. Texas is a state where they have it. And then they only offer it once a year. So that's why it takes so long to get that.
Yeah.
Um, that certification, right?
Yeah, just, you know, if we happen to lose an employee or something, you lose that three-year position, you know?
You, you lose that certification. Um, and this, I guess, in, in my opinion, uh, it, it solidifies the professionalism of that position once they obtain the certification. I don't, a lot of the other elected officials across the state or the elected clerks across the state obtain that certification. Commissioner Thompson, I'll be honest, I don't have time. Uh, and now that we have an elect, we have, um, an election coordinator is what her official title is. It makes sense to me to have her become certified instead of myself.
Right. Is Stacy certified?
She's not. Not a certified election official.
Did she ever warn me?
No. She's, uh, doing all that she can to retire into the sunset.
That feeling.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, any more questions for Doug?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, next one up, prosecutor, Mr. Okey.
Good morning. Morning. Nice to be here. I've been very busy working with the assessor on property tax-related stuff. I would, uh, recommend to the board that, uh, between now and July 8th, keep your calendars open because I think it's gonna be busy as it has been the last several years. But in particular with, uh, property tax-exempt appeals uh, because of the, uh, some of the decisions that we've made earlier, earlier this year. So I'm anticipating it's gonna be a very busy two weeks. I did attend, uh, an employment law seminar on Tuesday. Didn't have a whole lot of time to be out of the office, but I'm glad I did because the agenda was, was packed full of good information. Uh, there's new guidance from the EOC on harassment and discrimination. Uh, we haven't had updated guidance on that for probably 20-plus years. So, uh, I have that information and, and we spent two hours on the, uh, Department of Labor's, uh, wage and hour rule. So that was very helpful to attend as well. So I brought a bunch of information back that I can send out. Uh, I guess what I'm looking from you is, do you, do you wanna have a workshop where I can kind of pass along the training that I received to, to you and elected officials and managers? It'd probably be at least half a day if you're interested in doing that. I recommend that we do do that on a regular basis. Uh, we could schedule maybe an afternoon, uh, when you don't have a busy agenda or.
Are you thinking elected officials, department heads?
Yeah, anybody who has supervisory responsibility, I think, needs to be exposed to this and, and have an opportunity for questions and answers. I know Mike is traveling, uh, this week to a HR training. I'm sure he's gonna get some of the same information that I received. And so the two of us could, uh, could kind of tag-team that training if, uh, if we can find a time uh, a few weeks down the road, maybe a Wednesday workshop where we could, uh.
Will this also help us update our policies on that?
Yeah, the recommendation, the recommendation, and I think it's good advice uh, from the training I got, is that, uh, we really should be looking at the employee handbook every year and updating those policies to make sure it reflects, uh, new rules that are coming online. There's a, several new laws, both state and federal employment requirements that go into effect on July 1st. Uh, that'll have a direct impact on us. So obviously, we'd like to, to focus our, our training on the new requirements and, and what managers need to be aware of and, and responsible for. And, and yeah, we can take a look at the employee handbook and, and make some updates to, to make sure that it is as, as up to date as it, as it should be. So, uh, all in all, uh, good day. It's kind of frustrating and hard to be sitting in a, sitting in a training all, all day when you know you got work piling up back at home, but it's important information, so.
It's like a six and a half hour zoo.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, please, on the workshop. I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I, I, I thought so. And I, uh, as soon as Mike gets back, we'll work with him on getting that calendared and, and out to the, out to the group on a day that makes sense. And we can, we can all get together and go over it, so.
Good.
With that, uh, staff for questions? If you don't have any, I'll turn the time over to the, the next victim.
The next victim. I can't think of anything. I know, uh, we had a short discussion last week about the RS 247 FAA road.
Yeah.
And let's get through all this assessment appeal and get that off the calendar. And then we can move on that one here pretty quick.
That's, that's the next big project. I know I've got a couple of things that are time-sensitive that I'm kind of trying to, uh, work on as we, as we get through this BOE period. Uh, that's the, uh, the Gold Dust PSA for Idaho Power Substation. And then working with Dana Kaufman and the Road Department on the, uh, consultation bid packet. Uh, those are two fairly.
Oh, good.
Heavy lifts. We're, we're working on those. There's some, uh, there's nuances that has taken some extra time to get that stuff ready to go. But, uh, but those are the other things that I've been spending some time on.
Can't think of anything else. Anybody else got any questions?
Good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. We'll see you later.
Okay.
Uh, the next victim, Sheriff, come on up.
Or the next elected official. You guys really are not victims.
Victims. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, not a whole lot to update. Uh, I was gone all last week because we got a new grandson, so.
Congratulations.
We're working with that. Now it's a good thing to deal with, so everybody's healthy. So, uh, I was just catching up this morning and, uh, obviously, last week was busy. The hot weather showed up, felony arrests, uh, and some of those untangle. They're tangled when they start, but, uh, just another fine example of us being able to work with the prosecutor's office, come up with, with solutions and make it as seamless as possible for both us and the other side, if you will, to make sure that everything's going right and that they receive the services and everything when it's needed. Obviously, this weekend with, with the heat, Waterways has, has kicked off. There was, I guess there was an OUI and resistance to instruct on a boat yesterday, so. So here we go. And, uh, 4th of July's coming and it's probably gonna be hot. And this was just a purview. It just seems like we're seeing again, it's Wednesday and Thursday, which are really busy days up here. It's no, Friday, they're here already, so. So the, the traffic's really Wednesday, Thursday. And so, uh, it's just continuing. Uh, but we're, we're geared up. We have another deputy starting July 1st, Chad Babcock, uh, out of, uh, out of Emmett. Or starting Babcock.
13-year veteran kind of guy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good.
So, so he's starting. We have a few other applications. And so I think there's more, a couple more interviews Wednesday, I believe, is when we have those slated, so.
So where are we at? We heard from Yolly that, um, the Marine deputies, I mean, we're not even close to being filled with that.
Marines is so hard, just trying to find a place for them. And so, uh, we're.
You think it's housing-related?
Well, it's part-time too, so it's just, it's just hard.
It's hard to find.
And, uh, Marine Division's one of those that is a, it's a necessary evil, but it, as an administrator, it's scary because you have people that are with fairly limited training, badging again on a boat, you know, and, and they need to know all the laws, they need to know all this. But yet, it, it's, it's a perishable skill. It's, it's law enforcement. And so unless it's somebody that you can take from another agency, and, and NAMPA's been really good about sending people up other places like that, do allow within their policies to let them come up and work boats. And that's a blessing to us because when we just get people that don't have that experience, you're trying to train them very quickly on how to handle law enforcement. And we're trying to get them through firearms training, which we do, and everything that you gotta do, you get them through it. But it, it's a tall order for a part-time employee, seasonal.
More liability associated with that than anything else.
There is a huge liability there. And, uh, you know, just like, just like yesterday, I mean, luckily, uh, Danny Pierce, our backcountry guy, was close too, so he was able to go help. And he's got marine experience as well. But you start getting in resistance to instruct on boats and everything, it's a dangerous deal.
So is the other backcountry position been filled?
We are, we're roving through that is what we're doing. We're having guys moving through it. As, so it's not, it's not a full-time backfield yet because the road, we just have to take care of the road, so. But they're out there, they're doing it, and we're not having any problems getting volunteers to go to the backcountry.
And then while we were doing your budget, um, we talked a lot about the 9/11 positions. You've had two positions open for a year. There a reason behind that? Do you need those positions? Why are we funding something that's not getting filled?
Because trying to find somebody to come up for that wage and, and do a 24/7 deal that they're doing, it's, it's a hard deal. And, and let's look at the demographics of it. It's, I mean, we have one, one male up there. He's great, but most of it is childbearing ladies and everything. And, and by the time they have, they have a baby, I can't blame them. They, they're just like, I, I have to make a decision here. They're picking their family, and you can't blame them. There again, you're trying to get somebody to come up 24/7. And I'll tell you what, I will go through any unknown door any day of the week. And I'd rather do that than answer that phone. And, and the stuff that they listen to, the names that are called on that other end of that line, just because I, I know it's traumatic, they're going through things. But what they listen to on the other end of the line, whether it be somebody screaming at them, calling them everything under the sun, or hearing somebody die on the other end of the line, you're asking them to do a whole lot.
And I agree with that, but.
It's a hard position, and that's, that's nationwide. It's a nationwide problem.
How are we covering it if we had two positions open for that long?
Because you have a group of people there that are willing to do the overtime and do whatever it takes to make sure that, that system runs. There's a lot of times, there's one person up there handling all those phone calls.
Are we required to have two?
No, we're gonna be. I mean.
On the call volume.
You know, I encourage any one of you to go up and spend an hour up there and see what they actually go through. And see what happens when there's a crash on that highway and watch that place light up and watch one person try to deal with that, the radio traffic, the admin calls. It's, how they do it is absolutely unbelievable. And my hat is off to every single one of those people that do that nationwide, not just our people.
And I know, Sheriff, we bumped that beginning salary, did that? And that seemed to help for a while.
Yeah, I mean, as you remember, before we did that, we were asking for help from Adams County. We were, uh, we were down to four. So.
So we're down to, just two then?
There, we're down two and I think they have one in background right now and two more interviews within two weeks.
So we are getting applications?
They are getting applications, yeah. But a lot of them, when they find out what their requirements are, they, a lot of people think they can just work days. And it's like, well, no, I can't do that, so. It, it's just, it's a hard demographic to fill. But, uh, they're holding their own and, and, and historically, it's been a, there's been a lot of drama in the dispatch center because they're just together and they never get to go anywhere, so. And, uh, this team, there isn't. They're, they're doing a really good job. And the employees that are there have decided we'd rather run short until we get it filled with the right people than just bring somebody in and, and wind up with trouble, so. I think, I think it's a correcting problem. It's just slow, it's slow. And then, and then even when you do get them, uh, it's a lot faster to train a patrolman than it is to a dispatcher.
Can you just, so how many do we have in jail right now? State, state inmates, you know?
State inmates, I didn't get to check this morning, but we've, we've been holding right between 40, 45.
Okay. Kevin, on your, um, Waterways, I know I talked to.
Turner?
Yeah, Turner and, um, said he can't really pull somebody over for speeding, but what about for DUI that's, you know, they're drinking?
On the boat?
Deal with that on boat?
Well, yeah, they got an OUI yesterday. It's OUI on the water, operated under the.
So they can do that.
They, they hauled one to jail yesterday on it.
Good.
Yes, they can.
Because it, yeah, you're right. When it gets hot, they're not drinking water.
Yes. And some of those crashes, as you know, get really ugly. So, anyway, yep, they're out there doing it. And, uh, they, it's not a big group of guys this year, but it's experienced group of guys this year. And, and they're not afraid to take, uh, actions, so. We're, we're doing well with that.
Thank you. Hey, any questions for the chair? All right, congratulations on your grandson.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, the next elected official is Treasurer, Johanna. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioner. I think that's the first time you've called me an elected official, not a victim. Um, all right. I've got a couple of action items, but I'll do my office update first. We, uh, made it almost all the way through tax drive. Uh, deadline was the twentieth for the second half of property taxes. That means anybody that stuck their envelope in the mail on Thursday last week, we will be receiving today. So, um, I anticipate a large amount of mail to process in our office today. We are also still processing credit card transactions. So if you pay online with a credit card or an e-check, it takes three business days to process into the system. So today we're processing eighteenth and nineteenth because the nineteenth was a holiday. Um, so we're almost wrapped up, almost through. So I don't have a complete update for you on that process yet. We've collected over eight million so far. I anticipate a million and a half to two million more before we're all finished. Um, other than that, we have been working through tax deed stuff as well. We've, uh, had a few phone calls with tax deed folks over the last couple of weeks, but we're still holding at fourteen properties that are unpaid. Um, the week of July eighth will be the week that the, we work with the sheriff's office to get the properties posted for those tax deed, um, hearings. And that is the week that we typically see those numbers come down pretty quickly. So between now and the eighth, my office will be doing the best that they can to get in touch with those folks and, and have some conversations about making payments. Um, the public administration case that we are handling also, uh, you have to have a advertisement period for the probate case and that closed at the end of last week. So we'll be working with the prosecutor's office in their free time, uh, to get some, some things closed out on that case as well. And, uh, that's it for regular update stuff unless you have questions.
Um, I had a couple of questions. One, um, is there a timeline on the probate issues? Don't we have to have a certain date? Everything is finalized and sent back?
Yes. I don't know.
Two weeks, I think, or something like that. I can't remember.
No, it's longer than that. So we, um, when we open the probate case on January seventeenth, you have to have a six month period where you advertise in the paper for four consecutive weeks and you allow, um, any creditors to come and make a claim on the case. So that is the deadline that was just reached. Um, I'm not sure what the deadline is for closing everything.
Okay. I'll try to figure it out. Second question is on the, uh, company that we use to send out the assessments. And that bill came in a little over fourteen grand. Is that go, is that based on the number of mailouts?
It is. So it, you're charged per page and then postage per envelope. And we can choose to mail those things a little bit differently. And my office and the assessor's office both sent out notices recently. So, um, you're charged at like per page of print so that whether it's front and back is a different charge. And then, um, the postage is charged. So if you send out one assessment notice in an envelope, it's, you know, just the standard sixty-eight cent stamp. But if you end up sending multiple notices, they use larger envelopes and heavier envelopes. And so the postage fluctuates based on what's being sent.
Good. Um, but I think that's still a good deal. I think they really saved us. So, and you, you, your department, a lot of work.
Absolutely.
Do that.
We have about, we have over twenty or about twenty-five thousand parcels, just under twenty-five thousand. I think it's twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-four or something like that. Um, and between the notices that my offices send out, so we don't send reminder notices to everybody. You only get a reminder notice if you have not paid your property tax in full, if you're a delinquent in any way, shape or form, and then if you do not have a mortgage that pays your property tax. So my office sent out just under nine thousand notices in May for the reminder notices, but the assessment notices are required to go out to every property owner. And, um, so that's another twenty-five thousand. And I mean, if you think about the time that it would take to accurately print and address and, uh, postage, all of those envelopes, we're getting a good deal by sending it to a printer service. Yes.
So that fourteen grand doesn't include these nine thousand reminders that you send out?
You know, I don't think that we've gotten the bill for the reminder notices. I have not.
So they are doing that for you. You just give them the data and the information.
Correct. Yeah. And it's actually a really slick process because our accounting system that we use for property taxes does a, a data export. It's not, we're not sending them like photos of the assessment notices. It's a data export that comes directly out of our tax system into their program. They format our tax bill so that if we need to make changes, like last year when House Bill two ninety-two came through and we had the changes where we needed to list the new credits, and then the assessor's office this year had the change where they had to list an additional year of value on their assessment notice, that company makes the change in the template and our data just seamlessly integrates into that format. So it's pretty slick.
So I'm assuming we're gonna get another bill for those reminders?
Correct. It'll, I think it's usually around three to four thousand dollars, I believe.
And then did you figure that all in on your budget?
Yes. Um, it's in the general budget.
Well, it's a general fund expense.
It is.
So you've got that latest number. Okay. Good. Now you want to move to your action item?
Yes. All right. I've got two action items for you and both of them involve the assessor. So I asked her to stay in case we have any questions. Um, I will start with the debit card increase. So the assessor's office is sending several appraisers to school this summer. And in the past, they have, um, come up, they've hit their limit on their debit card during this time because there's so many people staying at hotels. Um, their debit card is also used here at the county for office supply purchases and other small expenses. A couple of years ago, or maybe last year, they had the card decline at the hotel when they went to checkout. So preemptively, right. Preemptively, the assessor has come to me and said, hey, let's not have this happen to us again. Can we get a temporary increase? Um, she did a bunch of math and was like, okay, I think that I can like squeak this out. And I think she proposed eight thousand dollars. And I said, why don't we just make it ten thousand dollars? You don't have to spend it. You obviously have to, uh, re- uh, record all of these expenses and get approval for them anyway. But I would recommend that we temporarily increase the assessor's debit card starting now to ten thousand dollars to when her appraisers finish school. Once all of those expenses are turned in, we will reduce it back down to the five thousand dollar limit that it currently is at.
My question, what's the limit now? So you're asking to raise from five to ten?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I believe that she has ten appraisers at school.
Ten.
Yes, I have ten employees going to summer school.
And how long is that?
Well, they're not up to a week.
Yeah.
Not all of them are going to be there all week, but some of them will be there two days, some of them will be three days, four days and/or five.
Do we need to make it, it certain that it comes back down just to give you a date to readjust or?
It'll have to be after all of the expenses are turned in and processed through the clerk's office. So I, I don't know when that will be.
When does school up up?
Um, I would assume that we could reduce it back down by September first, no problem.
First of?
September.
September.
That, that'll give everything time to go through and process and.
Why don't you just take it through the end of the fiscal year?
Whatever you decide. It doesn't, the fiscal year doesn't matter.
No.
Yeah. September first would be fine. I'll just set a calendar reminder to get it done and then I'll give you the update once.
So I, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve, uh, a temporary increase for the assessor's debit card to ten thousand until September first.
So you're gonna, I'm gonna motion a second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Now you're canceling my taxes?
I do have a cancellation request for you. That's my second, uh, action item. And, uh, this is for parcel RP one six N zero three E zero one four two zero two. And, um, so the way that tax cancellations and value cancellations work is that if we discover an error between the time that values are assigned, which is the beginning of June, and before taxes are applied, uh, we can, uh, appeal for a value cancellation. And this just essentially removes some value off the books and then taxes are applied accordingly. Um, but if we don't catch the error until after the taxes are applied, if it is indeed a value error, we have to do a tax cancellation. So I'm presenting this to you today. It was, uh, something that was discovered by the assessor's office. So she has, again, more detailed information on it, but I'll do my best to explain. Um, uh, property owner noticed on their assessment notice this year that there was a base rate error in the calculation. I believe that, is this bear land? Um, actually I think there, there is a house on it, but they're in ag, they're in, they have some meadow. And the base rate was entered, uh, as two thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars per acre. It should have been two hundred and twenty-nine dollars per acre. And so when he called in and said, why is the big difference? I, it's, I got, as I was researching and trying to figure out what happened, I realized the base rate, there was an error. There was an extra two. And so I told him we would get that fixed for him. Um, and I went and talked to Johanna.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Yep.
One zero two meaning.
So it was about a seventeen thousand dollar assessment error, which ended up being forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents in tax. So my request to you today is to cancel forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents in tax.
There's, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we improve the tax cancellation number twenty-four dash oh one for forty-four eighty-five, forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second, I'm gonna do second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. You don't feel good? You want the day's date? Hey, anything else?
No, sir. That's it for me.
Okay. Any more questions for Johanna, our esteemed elected official?
Thank you. Have a nice week.
All right, you too. Hey, we're gonna move on down to department heads. First one up is billing department. Annette. Good morning.
Good morning. How we continue to be busy. You know, inspections are very, very busy. Um, I've got a hundred and seventy-three permits. So we're moving right along. We did get somebody hired.
Oh, good.
Good. It'll start on July eighth.
Awesome.
Any kind of, um, experience?
He's a pro, has been a project manager at a couple of places. He's had his own construction business.
That's awesome.
Not here other, he lives here, but.
Is he retired or young or?
He's. You can't ask those ones. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not allowed to do that, but.
Because Mike's out of the courthouse, you can't.
Well, I'm just hoping that it's kind of a career choice maybe for.
He said.
Good.
He hopes to be here till he retires.
So just a young guy, huh? Just a young guy.
Yeah. But sure, that's about all I got.
Okay.
It's our normal summertime.
Any questions for Annette? So you'd be sending him through training, just like you did Gordon?
Yeah, he'll mostly work in the office at first, get help in the programs. And, uh, within two years, if he wants to be a inspector, then.
Go through the other stuff. Okay.
So we'll work up to it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Court Services, Diddy. Good morning.
Long time no see. Welcome to the county.
I would like to introduce you to our new juvenile probation officer. She is, uh, Nikki Byss. That's, uh, B-Y or B-U-Y-S, Mr. Park, uh, for the notes. Um, she's also known as Nikki Sauerland. So.
Nikki or Mickey?
Nikki with an N.
Mickey.
I believe I won a, uh, arm wrestle competition with the sheriff's department because they wanted her.
Come, it's good to see you.
How you doing? It's really good to have you here.
Thank you. Today's her first day, so this is her first experience with, uh, our department. So, uh, I'll finish this. You're welcome to grab a chair. Today, I'm just gonna be sides, uh, introducing, uh, the new JPO. I want to show this, the design of our, our shirts.
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty simple. Um, the other shirts are gonna, I don't have it on the back of mine, but the rest will have probation across the back. We had them all delivered last week without that. So all the other ones went back. We have some really nice hats, same design on top. So other departments around the state liked this simple design with just the state and then our county on it. So we may see other counties carrying it as well. Um, so this is what I'll look like when I present outside of the county is I'll have something like this on. So you guys got dibs.
Nice.
Um, I'll take a few minutes today just to explain a little bit about, just for transparency, if I'm out of the area, why is that? Um, so a couple of things that I'm a part of, uh, I'll start with the Juvenile Justice Commission. So the Juvenile Justice Commission is, um, a state advisory group that is, uh, a part of the Office of Drug, I gotta write it up, uh, the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Act, uh, which is a federal, uh, department. I'm just gonna read it so I can be very specific. The Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Act, also JJDPA, is based on a broad consensus that youth and families involved with the courts should be guarded by federal standards for care and s- and custody while upholding the interests of community safety and prevention victimization. The department, uh, the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections, IDJC, is the state agency designated by the governor of the state of Idaho, responsible for supervising and administering Idaho's plan under the JJDPA. The Idaho Juvenile Justice Commission, IJJC, we all love our acronyms, uh, services as the state advisory group responsible for performing the duties required by the JJDPA duties. Um, and I can go through what those, what their expectations are. But basically the commission, um, uh, is connected to the juvenile justice councils. And, uh, there are seven districts in the state. So we are district four, therefore there is a juvenile justice council. I've been sitting on that as a member, uh, basically like a year since I've gotten up here. So eight and a half years. And, um, I became the chair about three, four months ago. So under that duty, there is an expectation that comes down from the, uh, JJDPA, down through the juvenile justice council, down to us, to look at four core components. Those components are the DSO, which is the de-institutionalization of status offenders. That's keeping any kid with the status offenses out of detention. There's federal money that's connected to that. Separation of juveniles from adult inmates. It's called state, uh, sight and sound. So you have the, the department comes down here, make sure the jail doesn't have places where juveniles and adults can cross, or even in the courthouse, you know? Um, removal of juveniles from adult jails and lockups for those kids who are waived to the adult system. They're still trying to figure out and work throughout federally how to keep those kids out of those kind of institutions, as well as addressing racial and ethnic disparity, disparity, or disparities throughout the country. Um, so I sit, uh, by being the chair of the juvenile justice council within our region, looking at these four. We have a three-year plan and how to address those, as well as just generic prevention. I have to then go sit on the comm- uh, commission, which I just did two weeks ago. So I was gone for several days. They also had a big group, uh, of all of us chairs getting together because we've never done that, just to make sure we're all on the same page throughout the state, which is really helpful, especially since I was new. I didn't quite know all the scope of it. So still, what does it matter that I'm on those? Funding. So there's a lot of grant funding that funnels through that system. And we do get some benefits from that funding as long as I'm present and available and focused on what we need within our community to be able to address that funding. Um, I know that our, uh, Mr. Miller, way back when he was the director, he was able to fund a community project, a community garden with that kind of funding. Um, and so was able to bring that up. Right now with all the assessment center and all of our prevention work up here and all the partners that we have, we're able to use even more of that. So, um, if I'm not here, uh, about once, once a month, uh, on a Friday, uh, I'm down there, uh, for chair of the council and doing that. Of course, as you all know, being the board of anything, there is a lot of people on that board that you need to build those relationships, work with them from around the area. So I'm also trying to squeeze in, being able to meet with all those that are on my board, um, to be able to learn what they're about. So I can steer that ship in an appropriate way that supports us all, but really supports us the most in some way. So wanted to at least give that in a nutshell of kind of one of the reasons I might be out of town. Any questions?
Anything for all you do? Yeah, I think it's really important that you're on there, Diddy. I think that, that gives your program and the county a lot more clout. So I appreciate that. Thank you. So Diddy, is it, is it tough dealing with the, the federal monies that, when you're having to circumvent and work in that air arena?
Oh, there's, as I think as even you guys know, whenever someone gives you money, there's always gonna be these expectations of what you can and can't do with it. And so the art of manipulation is very much a part of my skillset. Um, I think for all of us, we all wish there was a line item for food because people don't come to a table to work out issues if they're not fed on every level. Um, so we're trying to get youth involved in these commissions. Um, and they're in school, they're doing stuff. So they, you need to give them something. So there's always gonna be those little gaps, but, um, I'm always optimistic when it comes, when I'm looking down a path, there's always a way to get to the direction that we want to get to. It's just figuring out how to get there.
Oh, good. Any, any more questions? All right. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Didi.
And welcome, Nikki. Melissa. Morning.
Morning, how are you?
Good.
I'll have Allison report out on four H programs first, and then I'll go into what I've been up to myself.
Morning, Allison.
Morning. Commissioner Salo. Well, here's summer, here we go. Well, let's see, right now, we had successful camps that we supported here out of Cascade at the Kelly's Whitewater Park. We concluded the clover bud programs that we had going throughout the year for the summer. That was great, we have a lot of little ones. Oral presentations were completed by youth last week. They did their demonstrations. I think there was over twenty-three youth that did this, and it's just outstanding that they're doing this outside of school.
Melissa, is this about their animals that they're doing?
It is, and well, for the majority of the projects that they're doing, it refers to those projects. So, yeah, yeah, if they've already done it at a club level, sometimes they'll do a different presentation, just because they can, and maybe something else that they've been working on. So it was really great illustrated talks and good speeches, and they did a lovely job, so that's always fun. It's fun, it's easier to get judges to help with that too, because they wanna see what they're up to. And in the thick of it, when it comes to fairground repairs, still trying to get a frost freeze connected, and need to work that out with Scott. Repairs on the barns and gates, and I need dirt out there moved in the pens again, and I need some removal of some items that are down there in a big truck to do it. So I'll be setting up porta potties again this year. I think we still have a few, a couple of years to get through before we get to where we want to be with the fairgrounds. So just making sure that's all set up. Had a great fair board meeting last week, thank you for being there, Commissioner Thomas. And Thompson, sorry. And we had a good talk about the different needs that we still need to set up, so that we have some fencing in the right area during the time, Friday and Saturday, so that just a little, some security down there, just for the general public and the animals.
Is the fair and rodeo back together, or is it?
It is this week, this week, this year.
Hopefully, it's not this week.
Not this week, but this year it is. And that's due to sometimes the stock contracts and just when we can fit in to have the best outcome for a rodeo, so we needed to have those dates be the same. And it gets a little congested, but it'll be fun. We will pull it off and it'll work. We have, let's see, yeah, so we're still just ordering supplies and setup materials. Archery starts tonight, though, we've started an introductory archery program. It's a gentleman that came from Emmett, his name is Todd Grimm, I need to look up his last name, but he's internationally working on his certification, so at a state level, he helps instruct other leaders. Really good at helping to find resources for us to use to get the kids started. We're gonna meet with a lieutenant or a sheriff to look at an area in the city, because you need permission to shoot within the city limits. They're not weapons, they're tools, but they're also, there's a way to put it in an area over by the rec district area, that would be a great zone for the kids to practice. So we're working on getting that. Tonight's meeting is simply just the basics and safety and getting it started in the group. And I think there's about fourteen kids already, so coming from McCall, Donnelly and Cascade. And he's out of Lake Fork, so he'll be doing an area venue up there for kids. Very motivated and we're very fortunate to have him, so. And then our pistol shooting sports program concluded, but they had a six-week program that was successful too. The large livestock field day is coming up here in a couple of weeks, and that'll be an opportunity for kids to practice and be ready for fair, have their animals shipshaped and ready to go for their events. Our record books are due, still need a few more judges for that and project interviews. So we'll be going through all their books. And currently, my help is all, uh, sitting, or not sitting down, what am I trying to say? Amy tore her ACL, unfortunately. Elia's on maternity leave, so, yeah, it's never a dull moment. We're enlisting all sorts of, a lot of teenagers that are stepping up and helping. So that's been pretty great, yeah. So we'll, we'll get through it, but.
What are the dates for the fair and rodeo?
First full week, so August fifth through the tenth. Horse shows will start on that day. If you've got a good chili, bring it on down on that Monday, because vendors aren't out there yet, so.
Now that we have the, the Merit Title building, I'm gonna assume people will be parking there. And so we just need to make sure that we're not doing any kind of work in that, in that, or on the pavement during that time.
Is that a viable parking solution? Okay.
Yeah, fair and rodeo. As long as it's not during the day.
As long as Merit Title, as long as Merit Title and the PA's office is closed, so it'd be Saturday and Sunday.
Gotcha. It's good to know, okay. Thank you. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Allison. So feel free to cut me off if you need for time.
You're done.
That's fine, I'll save it for next time. Integrated Pest Management, I did a program with the city of McCall, the Pull Together, and that little presentation I put together went really well, and so I pulled it out of the hat the next day with the Payette Land Trust Field Day, where we went out to do hands-on learning and assess the field and identify noxious weeds. And that was with master gardeners and the master naturalist, and Stephen Anderson was also at both of those events. And so I didn't ever think I'd be excited about IPM presentations, but you know, it was like my gem of the week, I was like, yes, it was fun. County chair training last week, district meeting. I realized I'll be going up for a full professor next year, so that'll be a lot of paperwork and reporting for me to present myself to my peers. Kaleidoscope festival happened this weekend, Emma and the master gardeners attended, there was over a thousand people. And so that's a really nice event for tabling and exposure about extension and who we are and what we do. This week, I have the advisory council meeting tomorrow, and I do encourage you to come. If you're not able to attend, please let me know, and I'd love to meet with you one-on-one just to go over, you know, what it is that we've been doing and get input on, are we on the right path to serve in the community? That'll be held via Zoom. And then on Wednesday, I'll be doing a presentation about our mushrooms projects with the advanced master gardeners to the Ada County master gardeners, and that'll be a Zoom as well. And then Friday night, I'm organizing a construction field day at the Bienvenidos Community Garden to raise, to do two more raised beds, and that'll just be with the community volunteers that are in that space gardening. And I might be able to pull in extra people. So I'm kind of wrapping my head around the best way to do that field day.
Do you still have your intern with you?
I do, yes. Yep. And she's, she's amazing, so excited and happy to have her. And the master gardeners that worked with her this past Saturday just gushed and said, you know, what a wonderful, bright young person, and so I second that. And then this Saturday, there's Alpha Days coming up at the Alpha Nursery, and I'll have master gardeners attending that for tabling. And in other offices, they have plant clinics where people come into the office, but I think it's best in our community to go to meet people where they're at. And so it's really fun to see that kind of thing happening at the Pull Together event with the city of McCall. So people were bringing plants and stuff from their yards, saying, what is this? Is this a weed, is this good? And so it's nice to see that concept really being activated. And that's, that's all I have to report for today. Do you guys have any questions?
The meeting tomorrow, I see it's at one-thirty on Zoom.
Yes.
I can be there for half an hour, but then I do have to hop off for a little while, and then I can come back. But what, how long will that meeting be?
I think I have it scheduled for an hour and a half.
Okay. All right. I'll try and be there as much as I can, but.
Thank you. And I sent it to Commissioner Thompson as well, so if you're able to attend, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Mike is gone this week, so we'll go to Jeremy. Good morning.
Good morning. The biggest, I have an action item, but real quick, the biggest thing I was working on, that nine-one-one upgrade, it's finished, everything went fairly smoothly. There was a few hiccups, but we're able to get it resolved and get everything up and running on the day that we planned to have it up and running. So that whole, that whole thing is done. Been working on last bit of last week, trying to get, and I should be able to get it done. Good wifi over there for, for the U of I for when the fair starts here this next, this next month, so I've been hitting that pretty hard. And then, uh, working on some budget stuff, that's, that's what I have going on. But I did have an action item regarding our phone bill. So, and you, some of you may know this, just some backstory for, since I've worked here probably for a long time before that. Anytime an employee dials a long-distance phone number and to put in a four-digit long-distance code. About a year ago or so, maybe a little longer, Zipley changed some equipment and that, whatever their, whatever mechanism they use to decide what phone does or doesn't have to dial that code has been kind of inconsistent, has changed. Like, I haven't had to dial one in a long time. The road department used to have to, but they don't. But then I put that phone out there for the new engineer, Dan, and he does. And so it's just really weird and inconsistent. So I spoke with Zipley, and what I thought that code was, and I also spoke, spoke with Clerk Miller, you know, back in the day when every phone call was charged like individually per minute, depending on whether it was local or long distance. I think that was a way to track who was making what phone calls for budgetary purposes, but I don't believe it has been used in a very long time. Certainly not on our bill, what numbers are being dialed, which ones aren't. The clerk's office isn't using it to report any, you know, we run a modern billing system, so we just pay for a lump sum of long-distance minutes that we just pay every month. So with all that being said, in order to kind of clean some things up and eliminate some confusion, I would like to request Zipley to just remove that requirement from our phone lines completely. But I just wanted to make sure, before I did that, that everybody was aware and everybody was fine with this, so.
Well, I agree with you there, Jeremy. So it's all gonna be just basically one payment covers everything long?
Well, that's the way it's, it is now. But that hole though, where there are still some departments that ran, that have to dial that code, like I said, I used to have to for a long time, but I haven't had to for like a year. So we'll just eliminate that requirement for people to have to dial that.
And there'll be no change on the code?
Other than that, there won't be any changes.
Okay. I haven't had a landline in so long that I haven't dialed a long-distance number.
Yeah.
Who knew that was even still out there?
Yeah, for the landline stuff, unfortunately, basically anything outside of this valley is considered long dis- long distance.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to authorize that?
Make a motion that we authorize the Zipley move long-distance code.
I agree with that.
Please do second all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you for getting Lake Fork audio and visual taken care of also.
Oh, yes. I ordered all that stuff, because a lot of the vendors that I buy stuff from, I can get it for a lot cheaper than just getting it off of Amazon or whatever. So, yeah, I was able to get all that, and it should be coming anytime now.
Perfect, thank you for that.
All right, appreciate it.
Old Dave and Larry.
Okay, any more questions for Jeremy?
I don't think so. This thing's driving me nuts, but since I emailed you, it hasn't said open browser again, so.
Yeah, I made some, some changes, I think, because there's an access point in this room, but there's also one in the assessor's office, which is like directly below us. So I think, when I was looking at the logs, it looked like your laptop was kind of fighting between them. So I made some adjustments, and we'll see how that goes.
Thank you.
So mine, mine still does that.
But just once in the morning, normally when you first, well, mine was doing like every ten minutes. Just have to reopen browsers.
I just do it one time.
Well, that's how it goes today, but yeah.
Mine's working great.
Awesome.
This is Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, Cindy.
Good morning. Good morning. So the regularly scheduled meeting in August has been changed to August first to accommodate the fair. We typically move that. We heard the Donnelly comp plan, and their recommendation is for us to incorporate their land use map and their transportation plan into our comprehensive plan, and then adopt ordinance to implement that as we go along. And they also are going to decrease, the recommendations can be part of that decrease that we had recommended a couple of years ago, in that size.
So they were also asking for some pretty specific items in that comp plan that we didn't feel like we wanted to enforce?
Well, the two is, well, we have to do the comp plan, and, and then we have to do the ordinance that will implement that comp plan. And part of what they want to see, based upon their zoning, is that anything adjacent to the city that goes through a land use application in the county first applies for annexation or goes to the city for annexation, and then they can go through the county if they're denied. And then the second thing was storage buildings, they want to see a little more design than just their typical standard metal building.
Inside the city limits or in the?
The impact area.
But there is no boundary change?
Yes. The P and Z commission is going to be recommending that east boundary be pulled back. Because, east boundary, it goes like halfway to Roseberry. They want it pulled back closer to Donnelly, because it's just an open field.
So do we, can we, yeah, in, at this level, like our storage unit stuff, like we just did on Sampson Trail, we ask for a better legally? Can we ask for a better visual on the side of their buildings to this big steel wall?
In our.
Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, in our ordinances, that would be part of the mitigation for the visual impacts.
We can do that anyhow.
You can do that in our ordinance, yes, it's because it's a performance-based ordinance.
We don't have an architectural ordinance.
Right.
And so, and so I, I think what we need to have a longer conversation on is when we have these conversations with the cities about their impact areas, what we're going to allow within those impact areas. We already know that, you know, McCall, we're probably gonna be changing some things. What we don't want to do is replicate the concerns we already have with the impact area in McCall. So I'm not exactly certain how this would do it. But I do feel like, like on the scenic quarter, maybe we should look at an ordinance around some architectural approvals, anything that's on our scenic byway, so.
Kind of like we do with the Conexes, they gotta be a neutral thing.
Right. I, I, you know, I don't know the way you guys feel, but I think on the scenic byway, we should have stronger architectural approval, whether it's inside the area of impact or outside the area of impact. And that way, it would be a county ordinance, it wouldn't be a city ordinance. And so, you know, that's my feedback on.
Does that include landscaping too?
But first, we have to get through the comp plan before we adopt those ordinance checks.
You might be, I might be dead before you get through the comp plan.
I know this.
So we might need to do something before you get through the comp plan and take a look at it. But I, I think that having conversations about each one of the communities, we need to have a cohesive strategy with all three, so.
So would you want different designs in each different community? I mean, because Cascade doesn't look like, McCall doesn't look like Donnelly.
No, I don't think it's a design, I think it's just a, we're all kind of on the same page of, you know, we're like that storage unit down there on the side of Donnelly is just shiny steel buildings.
Which one is that?
One going north out of Donnelly on the left.
That one, that would not be within a scenic overlay.
Well, you can see it from this.
Well, you can see things along the mountains from Highway fifty-five. So we tried to establish that thousand-foot corridor once before. Eight, not that a thousand feet has any special power.
Well, I think because this is a conversation, and this is, this is really just a report out, but I, I do think we need to set aside an hour and talk about some of these things before we get together with the cities.
Yep.
And really have a thorough.
Well, and what I don't want to end up doing is what we're having to do with McCall's impact area.
And that's why we went this way instead of what had been proposed.
We need to go the other direction where it's more under our authority and our decision.
P and Z agrees with that, they don't want to set up special ordinances.
Do you think we adopt their, their comprehensive plan?
No, we don't adopt Donnelly's comp plan.
No, their map.
Their map, their land use map. That guides, you know, decisions in the impact area.
Sure.
And their transportation plan, so that we can, you know. And their transportation plan so that we can, you know, match up our transportation corridors.
Absolutely.
But no, we are not going to recommend adoption of the Donley comp plan.
Okay, so is that transportation plan in the, their comp plan? I haven't gotten that far.
They have a transportation map in there.
I'll try to take a look at.
We, we do have one change. That's to make Old State Highway a, a major corridor versus a minor.
Okay, what else?
Uh, Gary Swain resigned for personal issues. And I'm advertising that. I've reached out to the Star News. I asked McKenzie to put it in, you know, the social media.
So that's mid-range, that's right around the Donley area.
Gary Swain.
Lake Fork, isn't it?
Um, more Lake Fork.
Yeah, he lives just south or east of Lake Fork.
And so kind of Donley to Lake Fork area.
Good.
That area. They could go McCall or Donley area.
And Catlin, you won't do that till December, will you?
Color. And when she resigns. Hopefully we get her as long as we can. I'm working with Rocky Mountain Signs on the shooting signs. I've told them, you know, general layout is like four, four by four, you know, no shooting firearms prohibited. And I quoted the Valley County Code and then the, the state code that was listed in that ordinance for misdemeanors. They'll be metal and I've, I'm going to order five of them to start with. And then I would like to get one big one at some point that inlays the map of that parcel. Or do you think I should?
Where would you post that?
At some central location.
I mean, is there only, uh, I guess I'd ask Larry, but isn't there just the one gate you go into on the green gate?
Yeah, the, the one that they're using is just single entry, the regional green gate entry.
Right. Is that how you get to Yahoo corrals and that's how you get to all those others? It's not.
Now it's the next road down from the green.
Oh.
That you get to Yahoo and where our parking lot is, yeah.
So we need one at each.
That's why I'm getting five. So one, there's three different entry points. And then we'll put them over by where they're shooting to start with.
I received an email from Scott Corkle that Reagan Berkeley with Idaho Fish and Game wants to have a meeting and talk about the ordinance in the area that was determined to be restricted. So I don't know if they have concerns. I, Fish and Game had never been brought up as somebody we needed to work with on this.
I'll look and, oh, we didn't do the notice, we did the.
So you're talking about a sign like the size of that map back there?
A four by four.
Close.
So here to the ground. You know.
That's one way to do it again.
Hold your hand a little harder.
So we're working on that. Fert Grove has had some issues lately. Some guy went out and filled in his property by six feet of dirt to his property line. There's a note on the face of the platte that says you can't fill in six feet. You can't put, fill within six feet of your property line because it needs to left, be left natural for drainage. So we told.
Is he sitting on top of the mountain? I mean.
Yeah, he made a mountain for himself and filled into his property lines. So, you know, it's like a raised dyke situation. I don't know. And there are some people that have kind of been pushing their dirt a little closer and thing. So I was working with the homeowners association. They sent everybody a letter and told them they couldn't do that. This particular guy is kind enough to remove his dirt, but he wants me to enforce it on everybody else. HOA sent out a letter. And it's also in their CCNRs. So just to give you a heads up on that in case you hear anything. I will not be here tomorrow. Have a list and it will not be in this town.
I have Lori's out. Is she out this week?
Um, no, she's working today and tomorrow. Maybe Wednesday.
How's your new code in first weekend?
It's excellent. He's, he's a go getter. He loves to go out in the field and post signs and pick up signs and he looks for signs and. I mean, he's only been here a couple of months and he's caught on to our software. He's extremely accomplished in Excel. Um, he's, he's doing really good.
Awesome.
I'm very excited about him.
Figuring out all the campaign signs that got left out.
No, we, we aren't touching campaign signs. We pick up a lot of the, you know, worship window signs. Junk car removal signs, real estate signs. And then he brings them back. He calls him and says, I have your signs. You can pick them up. We don't destroy them. And we let them pick them back up because the real estate signs are spendy. A lot of times those we just lay down. But, you know, when you go up and down 55, we keep it pretty clean. So it takes effort because everybody wants their signs.
Well, there's a lot of yard sale signs too that.
And we don't have anything against those. We love those.
They said it would tend to stay longer.
Well, if, if, if they get stale, then we might do something. But most of those are located in the cities and we don't do anything in the cities.
They're early up for a weekend anyhow, so.
Hopefully. Yeah. Um, Wednesday, because of the watershed coalition, the Valley Soil Water Conservation District Coalition, Watershed Coalition, Fair River Coalition. Um, I have a group that I belong to and it's the land use. And so I will be meeting with them for a couple of hours. Um, I will curtail the time I spend on this effort because I really do not have time. And we are extremely busy right now. So. And Lori's extremely busy. If I want to fill at home, I go back to her office because she has as many piles as I do now.
You've seen a pretty good influx of people bringing in subdivisions and things like that. You've seen that?
Oh, we have some subdivisions. We have a lot of rentals. Um, we have someone that wants to put in, you know, seven homes for employees. We have a lot of different types of things, but they still take time. Um, some vacations. Lot of time spent on the phone just answering people's questions. You know, what can I do? Can I do this? Can I split this property? A lot of realtors call, a lot of just people inquiring.
Somebody wants to put in seven homes, isn't that a subdivision?
No, because they're not going to sell them. A subdivision is when you draw lines between the houses. Putting in seven homes is just a conditional use permit for multiple residences on one parcel.
Cinda, are you reminding them to the 602 N N tax break that they can get?
No, we attach that to our application, but I don't tell them about, about it.
So I think that's kind of important for a lot of folks to know that, you know, there, there's a break on the property tax for the first five years.
Well, this one, it's, it's more of a family and employees. You know, they have family that needs a place to live and then they've got employees that need a place to live.
And how do you, how do you do that send on one property? I mean, that's, that's.
Twenty acres.
So, yeah, but I, so in the future, they have to sell the property with seven homes on it intact.
If they sell it, yes. Unless they, in the future, apply for a subdivision.
So would they have, are all these gonna have their own septic, their own well?
They'll have their own septic, I believe. There, there will be some shared well. I believe the fire department's going to require them to bury a tank. You know, the driveway will be built to fire code.
So our ordinance, how many, is there a maximum number of homes you can have on one property without having to subdivide it?
No, no, it's all based upon a site specific application and what that property will hold. Maximum density is 2.5 billion units per acre.
So what about road infrastructure? I mean, by doing it this way, it totally limits the county on asking them to improve. I mean, we're, we're putting multiple family residents on the county road to get there. So it does.
It does not limit our ability to require a development agreement if they're accessing and using offsite infrastructure.
Is this a way around just not having to do a subdivision?
No.
That's the way it feels like to me.
Nope, nope.
Cinda, are those lots deed?
Not this one. I've got two of them actually. Huh?
Are they deed restricted then?
No, because they own the seven homes.
So if any square down the road they decide to sell, then it changes the world.
Yes.
Have to subdivide.
They have to do a subdivision in the future if they decide that they're going to sell interest in the property.
But I'm assuming the health district would determine septic.
Absolutely.
And if it won't handle that much septic, then that's going to decide what they do. Right?
Another one I have, I think there's four houses that they're nosing and it's all for relatives.
I, I, I really have a problem with this. I'm sorry, but what P and Z come in with?
Well, yeah, it's, it's a performance based ordinance. Yeah, I mean, they just.
I think it's a way around trying to pay for a subdivision. I think that that's not what we need to be doing is putting multiple residences on a single property without requiring a subdivision. But that's my opinion. See what it comes in at.
Well, they're still getting development agreements, so they're still.
Everything's covered, roads, sewer, water, power.
Okay, we gotta move on. Any more questions? Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Cinda. Have a good day tomorrow. Next one up, parking wreck, Larry.
Morning. Well, weekend, huh? Place was absolutely packed. Campgrounds were full, parking lots were full. And our goal as always is keep everything clean and safe. And that's what we did. Um, I met with Reagan from Fish and Game on, uh, last week at Wellington. They want to put a check station down there this fall for a chronic wasting disease on deer. And they showed me where they want, it would be fine. We're pretty much done with camping. So that's something that we can coordinate with another agency as a whole.
You're done with camping?
Huh?
You're done with camping?
Well, they're not gonna put it in until late October.
Oh, okay.
So there's not that many people down in there. We get a few, few hunters and that's about it. Should have been more clear about that. Speaking of, everything's full. I was, I was just going over the last, uh, you know, the last eight years. The only people that have really done anything to help with our, our growing population is the county. We've, we've put in Wellington campground, which is 18 spaces, Brush Creek, which is eight spaces. Um, we have the opportunity to put 10 spaces at Green Gate, 15 spaces at Francie Wallace and 18 at Boulder. Until IDL can make a decision on what they're going to do on a lease, there's no point in us spending money on picnic tables and fire pots or anything until they make a decision. So all that's on hold. We're not, I don't think it would be a bad, but this, this is something for you guys. A bad idea to have a resolution asking all our land managers to consider population increase on any land use plans that they come up with. Now they can ignore us, we all know that, but at least it's on record that we're asking them to look at the population increase. Which in the, in the PFC, we do it all the time and it's just in one ear and out the other. Cause we're still dealing, dealing with a 30 year old infrastructure and then we hear that these roads are getting torn up. Okay. When we built these roads, we had maybe eight people on it. Now we have 1,800 people on it. I would think the roads would start getting torn up. We're not planning for the future. We're just dealing with today. I met, uh, interesting Friday, I kept getting a call from this gal wanting to set up a meeting with me and T-Mobile. What do I do with, I've got to do with T-Mobile? And then they were talking, somehow the conversation got about cameras in our parking lot. They said they talked to us about it. So I met with the guy Friday. He's their, um, Jason Wilson. He's their government account executive. And shocking of all things, he's told me that, um, as of September of October, they've signed an agreement with Elon Musk and his Starlink that you will be able to text on a, uh, on T-Mobile anywhere. Cause it's going to go straight to the satellite near Texas. And within a year, you're going to be able to call. So they're turning the satellites into a, uh, that's where it's going to go rather than going through all these antennas around here. So that is a game changer for us for the back country.
Wow.
Yes. And they've already signed on Canyon County signed a contract. They're working with Ada County to sign a, Ada County sheriff to sign a contract.
It's like having a satellite phone.
Thirty-five dollars.
Oh my goodness.
You're kidding me?
No, I'm, 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 I'm passing the information on to Jeremy and I want to get it over to the sheriff too. Because this could be, and something Laura could use really, because she's in the back country all the time. Right now, all we can do is text on our, on our, um, little satellite trackers and that's it. And they're not that efficient, but this thing has really got some potential. So just something to follow up with.
Larry, would that work for our groomer?
Yes. Now we wouldn't get rid of the garmins because the garmins track. And, and one of the greatest things about it is when, when dispatch calls and says they haven't checked in, we can see the groomer's still moving. Where, you know, we can't with those phones. But it still means that rather than having a, a conversation that takes place in short bursts, we can have a continuous conversation taking place. Uh, Saturday I attended the, uh, IRC meeting, uh, excellent meeting. We, uh, they shared, right now there's more UTVs registered than there is motorcycles, which really surprised me. It is growing really fast. Larry Craig was there to share the update on the new highway that he's proposing going from Emmett to no business. They're moving along on that. He asked for some.
They're moving along.
Yeah, they, they're legislatively, they've got it all written to start the, uh, the process, the study process. So they do the study process and then they move forward from there. But they've already got, they've got a route already designed or that they figured out. I kind of disagreed with him. He wants to bring it down to no business. I'd rather he brought it through Fish Lake. Cause that'll bring it to the top of Brundage right, right there above, um, Boulder Road and all that. And I, less, less stuff to traverse, to be honest with you.
Almost be easier if they just put it out at New Meadows and just run it all the way through.
I think they want it to come out above the stuff coming up 95. Just so they don't have to have that problem. You bring all, all your commercial stuff, your big, long stuff, your heavy stuff. But, um, they're, they're taking it out of, um, out of the areas. They had trouble with the tribes, the culturally sensitive area and putting it up just a little bit higher. And they've got the roads figured. In fact, they, they took it, one of the ITD guys on a drive and they were surprised that they could do it all the way from Emmett. Yeah. Pretty exciting. Um, there's a symposium taking place in Sun Valley. Um, it's a bunch of independent people from Stanley that started this. It's on smoke and the effects of smoke on people and animals. And, um, we do have representatives going to that to see how it goes. There, people are really concerned that the first, um, management from the Forest Service is going to be burning instead of logging and thinning and stuff like that. So they're, they're going to have a symposium on that.
Where's that gonna be?
Sun Valley. I'll say, I'll send you guys, once I get the information, I'll send you the information.
I'd be really interested in that from the Roadless Rules Commission because that's the conversation in Roadless Rules is all the smoke.
There was a lot of conversation this meeting about roadless rules and the misinformation about roadless. We've got, uh, so ITD has a rule. There's only so many license plates allowed, right? So, and but you have to sell so many of them a year to stay in there. Well, one of them's backing up. So we're finally going to have one for, um, moto for single track. They cut it off a little bit. It's actually a pretty good plate. And that, those funds will go to, uh, maintenance on the trail. I was going to share this with Johanna a little bit later. We had, uh, we're also looking at, there's a gentleman there that represents non-motorized, it's a member of, of Idaho Conserva, Idaho Conservation, that's pretty funny, Idaho Recreation Council. And, uh, uh, they're trying to come up with, because right now everything is pay to play except for mountain bikes. And so they're trying to come up with a sticker. They've actually got a plan. They've got a lot of backing from a lot of the, uh, mountain bike community on it. I'm kind of excited about that just because of the maintenance issue that we always are concerned with. Anyway, a lot moving forward. Any questions from you guys?
Hoppers in Sun Valley, do you know when that is?
It's, um, it's in July and I don't have the date. He meant it and I missed it, but I, I will still get it for you with the, and I've asked to have it recorded.
So one day?
I don't know.
Yeah, some of the information, I may be coming back asking you guys to, if I can attend that because.
Yeah, pretty, pretty, uh, it's a, it's a conversation that should have taken place quite a long time ago. Yeah, we're. Yeah, we're still looking for a facilitator for the Payette Forest Coalition, and just a reminder, it's about twenty to twenty-two hours a month, and it pays seventy dollars an hour.
So they. There you go. Their retirement plan.
Don't look at me, man.
Larry, you'd be fabulous at that.
I, I think there would be groups involved that wouldn't care too much to have me as the facilitator.
So Paul, just since he stepped down, they hadn't got nobody to replace him yet.
No, and his last one was this last Thursday. Fortunately, we have two field trips, the next two meetings, and then we'll be back at it again. So, and we're looking real hard. I actually talked to a lady that does facilitation for Cisco Technologies, uh, lives in Donley, and she does it all from home, and she thinks she might have the time to do it. Oh, it just happens to be another one of the pickleball ladies.
There's also, now that you say that, I may have a name for you too.
Huh?
I may have a name for you too.
That would be awesome. Any, anything we can get, because we gotta make some decisions. They have put it, for some reason, it's all going down to the steering committee to make these decisions, so we gotta get her done.
Larry Craig's group should have taken pictures of the Highway fifty-five this weekend. It would have strengthened their conversation.
Wasn't that something?
That's a mess.
I, I, I was shocked. It's funny, Larry said that, because he represents, now he's the president of the RV Association, and he mentioned that they had been negotiating with ITD about putting a light at Banks. And he says, yeah, they've approved it, da-da-da, but I went through all the stuff that's planned for fifty-five in the next few years, and there was nothing in there about a light at Banks. So.
And we've been told there's a light at Banks.
A light at Banks, I mean, just like they did at McCall?
Yeah.
That sure sped things up at that intersection, made it really nice. They could do that there.
What they really need is one of those circles that you drive around. Only I kind of tend to get lost in them.
They'd be bumper cars now.
Oh, my gosh.
Their planning, planning phase is the next year or two, so they've got money in there. It's in the, it's in that program.
And they must be dropping drills in there today, because they've got the highway closed, because they've got a helicopter dropping equipment in.
Is that at Rainbow Bridge?
At Rainbow Bridge, yeah. So just out of curiosity, do you guys know what they're doing with those big aluminum World War II crosses that are up on the side of the mountain?
You mean, Normandy Mountain, Normandy Beach?
Yes.
Those are permanent.
Are you serious?
Those are the snow.
That's for snow.
Sanding them or snow or anything comes off there.
Looks like garbage. Looks terrible.
They were designed just for that.
They kind of painted them or something.
So Larry, I got one question for you. I mean, I, I like what you just said about, you know, eighteen, and now we need, we got eighteen hundred. How do you get this kind of information across to a federal government that doesn't give a rip?
Well.
They don't want nobody on their land.
I, I think, to an extent, and, and thank you so much for sharing this with me. I did share it with the group. And the one thing I found in reading this thing multiple times and other things I did on federal land management, excuse me, on federal land ownership, is nowhere in there to talk about management.
What is that?
It's, uh, uh, federal land ownership, constitutional authority, and the history and acquisition disposables, disposal and retention. Um, I, I'm gonna scan this, and I'll send you guys. It's, it's a good read, it's a simple read. Talks a little bit about the history and the corruption that took place over a period of time, and why we got to where we are. But the counties do, there are counties that have sued over land management, and I hope that never has to happen.
I hope not either, but I mean, they've got, they've got to start working with this.
They are not looking, so they always, in their plans, they look at today. They do not look at tomorrow, and I have not seen anything in, whether it's the Boise, or the Payette, or the Sho-shone, or any of them that shows that they're planning on an increase in population, and the only reason I suggested that we have that resolution out of our commissioners is because it documents that we've asked for it, and who knows down the road, we may need to have that documentation.
Are you gonna put that on agenda for approval?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to write it next week and send it to you guys, and then you guys can kind of fix it up and make it birdy, and then we can put it on the agenda.
I bet there's some already been written.
Yeah, I, I've been looking for that, yes.
Kind of do a little more digging, but you find one.
All right.
Make a really strong word.
Detailed, yeah, a little tiny, quick to the point.
Send it to Oki for review first, he'll.
Okay, we gotta move on. All right, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Well, land, welfare mitigation, Mara, welcome.
Mara.
Mara.
Tomato, tomato.
Whatever.
Tomorrow. Don't ask me to say your last name, though.
I know, I love a check.
I love a check. I love a check.
I love a check.
I love a check, yeah. Good morning. I don't really remember the last time I was in here, since I've been gone for so long, so there's been a lot happening. Um, Stephanie's been super busy with getting bid proposals for all of her projects for Jug Mountain and West Hazard. Um, so we've gotten, she has an appointment today with you guys to do another bid for unit four, I believe, four or five.
I'm on the Genesis eleven fifty-five.
Eleven fifty-five, yep. And then I've also been reaching out to landowners for East McCall. Um, so next week or the week after, I'll have some bid, um, for that one as well. So we're truly underway of getting bid projects done and starting to spend that grant money. Um, with that, I also have a updated MOU from the G and A agreement. Um, so P Sean or Patrick Sean and Brian Davis found us another eighty grand to be able to do some work on the ground here in Valley County.
Which is anywhere?
It's truly anywhere. The project area does have to be within the SIL boundary, so Southwest Idaho Landscape Boundary, so that's that high fire risk boundary, um, within the SIL. So I have to kind of find a project area, and then I have to propose it to Patrick Sean and Brian Davis, and then they approve it or suggest something different. Um, so I do have a couple spots in mind, uh, for that kind of area. And if you'd like me, I can present something to you guys as well, if you'd like, or if you would just like me just to present it to Patrick Sean and Brian Davis. Um, however you guys want to facilitate that, but that has to be done within the SIL.
Does this have to be with a homeowner?
Um, typically, I would like to do it with a private landowner, but it can be done on state ground, Valley County ground, county ground, or Forest Service ground. If it's done on Forest Service ground, they have to propose a project to me. Um, and the NIPA and staff have to already done, be done prior. Um, it just makes it easier for us to facilitate, because there's a lot less hoops to jump through than federal government, right? But typically, they're expecting most of the money to be done on private lands, and that's kind of the, the end goal, right, is most private landowners can't do um, those large-scale fire mitigation projects, because it costs so much money per acre. So, like I said, I have a couple ideas in mind. Um, it just depends how involved you guys want to be with determining where those areas are, and then me presenting it to Patrick Sean and Brian afterwards.
So does a subdivision count as a private homeowner?
Yep.
It does?
Yep, even common area in the subdivision, yep.
Or if you can't find anybody that's, that's interested, why don't you come give me a talk? I have a chunk of ground there in that Cabartan area, Clear Creek area. My property that I used to have fire-wise, I've done it twice now, but it's grown back again.
Yep.
And it's probably, I don't know, forty acres, fifty acres.
And that's the one thing with typically grant money, is we typically can't use it to do man, like reinsertion of where federal grant money's already been done. I will have to clarify that with Patrick Sean and Brian with this money, but like the IDL grants, I can't, I can't do a project and then ten years later do the project on that same land. They're supposed to maintain it, right? So the goal is for us to come in there, help them get it back to this fire mitigation state that we want it to be, and then they maintain it every year, so then it's not as expensive, right? So that's the whole goal. Um, but we can definitely go in there and look.
I, I, you're our, you're our mitigation specialist. I mean, I'm counting on you to do the highest priorities and keep us safe. I don't need to approve where that's at, on what you feel, or.
No, I, I don't either, but like I said, if you don't have any place for it, then.
I have plenty of places. It's finding the landowners, um, to get on board, and I've been working pretty diligently, actually off of Clear Creek, Clear Creek Road, with a lot of subdivisions over there, um, to get some people that are more continuous, um, landowners to be able to do like a fuel break. Um, so if a big fire did come over the ridge, we already have something started and established for firefighters. So that's kind of the goal, is to look at conducive spots, kind of like your land, where you already have a fuel break, and maybe continuing where it got left off.
Sure.
Um, so I would love to come out there and look, because that is actually another priority area that I have in mind. And like Round Valley, um, we've been working with some landowners down there as well. Um, so it's just, like I said, more getting five or six landowners in a row to be able to do a larger scale project. Um, because eighty grand doesn't, it sounds like a lot of money, but if you think of it in scale of how many acres, it's only thirty-two acres. It's not a lot. Yeah.
Okay, we have an action item.
Yes.
Everybody knows or understands that there's an increase in funding to eighty thousand. I would entertain a motion to sign that modification.
I'm gonna make a motion that we sign the modification, the grant agreement for the G and A for eighty thousand dollars increase.
I'll second.
Got motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries.
And then, um, we did update the conference room up in Lake Fork. I'd like to thank the rec department, because they found some funding to be able to pay for the tables and chairs, and then facilities for actually ordering that, and then luckily, my grant helped fund the TV, and we did get an owl to help with being able to do, um, conferences and stuff. So, and I'd like to thank the IT department for finding, um, cheaper stuff, too. So that will be updated by the next couple of weeks. So it's an up and running, um, conference room facility, which is super awesome.
Stop by, take a look.
Yeah.
That's where that money went to. We were wondering.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, any other questions for me?
We're good. Thank you, Mom.
Okay, thank you. You guys need a break, or do you want to move on?
Let's move on.
Hey, Scott, you want to come on up? Next agenda item is buildings and grounds.
That's weird. So I was questioning earlier the chairs that were purchased, there were like three chairs purchased. But I can tell where the funding came out of. Is that out of yours, out of, oh, is that a rec?
Yep.
For all three chairs?
It was three sets of four. It was four in each one of those. So there was twelve chairs total.
It certainly was.
And stuff, so. That's, uh, that, that went through my Amazon account, so I had to reimburse my debit card, because that's what's attached to the Amazon account. The tables, we did through Office Savers, and I just passed that invoice on to the rec department, and then they, they put that claim in.
Good to know. I might use that for meetings.
I noticed over at the AOC the other day, when I was in there, the screen was, these lights were real bright in front of the screen, so I reached over and turned one switch off, and that whole bank just started.
You gotta go hit the other switch on the other wall.
Oh, so. Okay, that's good to, that's good to know.
There, there's swi, there's two switches for each, like one east and west end, and if you don't coordinate them, then the lights start doing that.
That's good to know. Thank you.
It took us a while to figure out what was going on with them, but, yeah, there's, uh, there's, there's, there's there's switches for the, all the lights on, on east and the west ends, and if you get them out of whack, then the lights start doing that.
That's what does that. Good, appreciate that.
So, yeah. And stuff.
Hey, what else you got?
Um, how in the arena, we, um, the bleachers are ordered, um, and underway. Um, I'm gonna do, we're gonna do the sprinklers. I'm gonna do it out of the maintenance for the fairgrounds budget. We're looking probably about seventy-five hundred dollars, and I've got about eighteen thousand still in the, in the maintenance budget for that. Kind of got to decide what we're gonna do with the lights, because we've got to pull the poles now, or, and get, putting the deal together, or leave them and do it down the road.
They in the way?
They, well, they're not in, well, we want to pull them out if we're gonna put the solar lights in. They're not in the way if we don't. Um, they will be in the way next year if we want to put another additional set, one pole will be in the way if we want to put additional set of bleachers on the south end, but, um.
My feeling is if the ones we got are working now, and we don't have to move the poles, then let's stick with what we got until we make sure we're under budget on the rest of it.
So do we get a cost?
I mean, that's, everything else is covered. I mean, we've got, um,
Was, uh.
Arenas paid for, um, well, we're gonna, you know, we've got the ba, we've got the money allocated for the bathrooms and stands, bleachers. Sprinklers are gonna come out of, like I say, the maintenance and repair budget. The lights are the only thing.
Do we get a cost on lights yet?
Yeah, they're fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah. I've, um, Shelby, the gal, got ahold of me with the other company. She didn't give me a price, but she gave me a layout for lighting, and it left the center of the arena dark, uh, for some reason, I don't know why, which is kind of a problem, especially generally, you know, they hold the bull riding to the end of the event, and the, the rodeo, and that's when it's dark, and you've got the stands across from that, and you leave the center of the arena underlit. I just said that wouldn't work.
Yep.
So she's supposed to get, uh, go back to their engineers and come up with something and get back to me, and I, I haven't heard anything from her. So, um, like I say, the, the bid Toby got, he is the people that he met at the National Finals Rodeos, and that's at fifteen thousand, so that's fifteen stadium lights is what it is.
Right.
They're looking at, and lighting for the, the pins, you know, the cash pins and, and the, and all the pins for keeping the livestock in the rodeos, so.
But they just kind of tied to the fencing?
Yeah, they're actually, yeah, is what it is.
Do you know if they have money set aside that they could use for that?
Who's that?
The Fair, the Fair and Rodeo. I mean, the, they had quite a lot of carryover budget. I don't know what they're saving that for, and this is the county, county facility, I get that. Um, but the increase in, in lighting is specifically really for rodeos, correct?
Maybe that, and then if they do use the, you know, the arena in the winter for the, um, if they want to flood it again and try and do an ice skating rink or something there, so.
Remember, we sent kind of an MOU with the fair with last year, year before that, that we wouldn't use that money for maintenance stuff.
This isn't maintenance, this is new construction.
What I'm concerned about, honestly, is that it always rains during the fair. We have solar lights and no sun out, is that, we're gonna end up with a dark arena?
Well, you know, most of the cities are going with their street lighting and everything else. Um, ITD's going to a lot of their, everyone's going to, so that, they've got to have something built. Yeah, they've got to have something built into them for low lighting or something. I'm not, you know, I really don't know the technology, but with cities going to their streetlights and parks and stuff, um, it's kind of something that compensates for in the winter and stuff where it's more gray sky and things, um, you know.
I mean, it's just. Better lighting, I'm, I'm sure it would be nice. I don't, I don't know if the city of Cascade may have any kind of concern with lighting that thing.
Now, they, uh, Toby talked with Darryl, and it's kind of grandfathered in, and it's kind of a sporting event, so it kind of, from what Toby, Darryl told him, that it does not fall under their jurisdiction or their rules, so.
I wonder if they can, if they can get the center of the arena lit with the new stuff. Um, if it's easier to take those poles out now, take them out.
Yeah.
But it's, if they can keep it under that same fifteen thousand.
Does that include the pole for these lights?
I guess it's the, you know, all, all the materials to do.
Everything, huh?
I don't know where we're gonna get the money from unless we take it out of fair or your, your budget.
So do they, in your budget, you had some in there last year for improvements to that. Is that still in there, or have you?
Well, I, I have, I have, I have the, the fair budget in, in buildings and grounds, just worth twenty thousand put in there. We.
Actually, I think we have more than that.
What's that?
I think you have more than that.
It's only twenty thousand, commissioner.
Yes, yeah.
Eighteen thou, eighteen hundred has been expended.
Yeah, we, because we, we worked on the two barns, replaced switches, put in lights and, and breakers um, in the electrical down there, so I guess I got about eighteen thousand left. Look, about seventy-five hundred will be, um, you know, the, doing sprinklers and stuff, so get, get that put in before we, and digging before we get things put in place.
Scott, I know we talked to a couple of meetings back about, is there any kind of, uh, construction plans that we could look at? You're gonna talk to Toby about plans for that arena. We haven't seen anything yet.
Well, the arena layout's gonna be what it was before, you know.
We don't have actual drawing.
Well, yeah, I had one when I initially showed it, when we purchased the arena. I do still have that. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the layout's basic same. Bucket chute's in the same place, the roping, uh, boxes are gonna move to the south end, catch pans down here, and then on the north end is where the, you know, concession announcers, bathrooms are going.
And then where's, you guys gonna have a?
And then where's, you guys gonna have a portable chute to load and unload? Where's the chute going?
Well, we have a portable chute down there.
Okay.
Well, they, they purchased that, we purchased that a year or so ago.
Doug, this last year in the fair and buildings, I'm looking at the budget comparison report. So, we spent seventy thousand in twenty-three, shows thirty-five thousand in twenty-four. And we are proposing seventy thousand this next year. Can, I mean, if he does something, what's that seventy? I mean, we're, we're bumping that up quite a bit?
The contribution that the commissioners have made to the Valley County Fair Board. And that's, a lot of that is for ribbons and trophies and buckles and paper stuff.
Okay, so think holistically behind that though, I mean, we are putting in another hundred and eighty stands. I mean, that budget, that rodeo should be more than self-supporting at this moment in time to pay for all of that. So, this money that is on our line item is, um. I mean, are, are we allowing them seventy thousand dollars? Okay, we'll need to talk about that budget time later, but.
Seven or seventy?
Seventy. Um, we'll need to talk about that, but I, so in your budget, just how much, we're only putting twenty thousand in there for building maintenance?
Yeah, that's, we started that budget line last year and put it in for the two thousand twenty-four year. And like I say, so far we, just the requests I've got for down there from the four H's, working on the barns, we gotta. Try and get one more buried hydrant working, but, you know, right now I don't have any other requests for improvements down there.
Okay.
Like I say, the sprinklers, we're looking at seventy-five hundred dollars. The big cost is each one of the heads, the, the big rainbird heads are almost six fifty a piece, seven hundred dollars a piece, but.
So, we do this, Scott, this totally is the, thi- this completes the reconstruction of the rodeo area. So, if we do the lighting now, then we're not gonna have any requests pretty much anytime soon to do anything else.
No, the only thing I would see another request for is possibly addition, another stand, you know. They have a smaller one, a hundred and eight seats, um, that would, you know, work on the south end, you know. Have a kind of complete our wrap, you know, of, of seats, give them another hundred and eight additional tickets they could sell. But I'd look at, you know, something like next year, you know, um, budget.
And again, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have a conversation with them about what we're paying for, what they're paying for. Because we're not gonna levy taxpayer dollars of seventy thousand dollars. If, you know, if we're paying for all of this stuff, because we're levying it on our side to try and do this.
The levy for four H's and their.
There's a levy specifically for fair, fair and rodeo yet.
And we wanna, it, it'd be nice to be as self-sustainable where they actually make money and. Which I think they could, once we get that third set of bleachers in there.
It's always been an attendance issue.
They made money last year. Yeah, last year they made money. It was in the black last year.
Yeah.
Good thing.
So, yeah, they're gonna have another hundred and eighty seats they can sell, you know, for this year. Like say if we another, add another hundred and eight, hundred and ten, you know, down the road.
Commissioners, you've only made a first half contribution of thirty-five thousand, so there's still thirty-five thousand in the. Um, fair and rodeo. To budget to, to provide them. So, I don't know if you wanna schedule something with the fair board to see if you could potentially use some of this. Money to pay for the lighting upgrades or if they need it. I, I don't know.
When do they use the request that second?
Have they given us their budget yet?
We have not received their budget yet because they, uh, their treasure, they removed their treasure. And I don't know if they've replaced the treasure. I defer to Commissioner Thompson if they have replaced. That position or not.
And I told him to, well, I, what I understand they have, and I told him at the meeting on, uh, Wednesday. That we need that budget submitted. So, hopefully they're, they're getting their act together.
So, when's their June, or their July meeting now, is it?
Be the third Wednesday.
Hey, look, the kind of thing is we can't wait another three weeks to meet with them, make a deal on the lights. I mean, we kind of, we've got. Two months left to.
I say if Toby's doing the arena right now.
Yeah.
We need to find out whether we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get those lights in, get it done while he's doing it.
Before, yeah, we get too much. Well, you gotta remove the poles before we put some, sort of, you know.
For which?
For our lights?
I think right now, from what I'm hearing, is Scott is proposing that would come out of the building department's fairground budget. The eighteen thousand that's left.
Sounds like you got.
No, that's not what I'm.
No, I, I'm looking, proposing seventy-five hundred for the sprinklers out of the budget, which would. That'll leave me eleven thousand left or ten thousand left.
And that's what he's got to work on the buildings, so we gotta either do this out of ARPA or, you know.
Or just use. General Fund Reserve. Or you could.
Use nine out of the remaining. You know, fairgrounds, leave me a thousand in there if something comes up I need to work on and then you'd only need another six or something to, to do it.
Well, I think, so this would be my proposal. I think we go ahead and move forward so we can get it done, everything's done. But then we work with the fair board and say, listen, you know, you've already gotten thirty-five. We're gonna reduce that down to whatever it needs to go down to, to pay for this, out of their proposal. They don't, they don't need seventy thousand dollars to run the fair. I mean, that's all of the cost. That's not even their income string. Last year it made money. So, where is this money going?
Oh, that's what we need their budget to see where they're at, because I don't, I don't know.
And so, you know, I, but, and until we get a budget, you know, they're not gonna get, they're not gonna get. Taxpayer funds until we get a budget and I don't know what their audit looked like, Doug. But, you know, we don't need to look at that right now. We can look at that later, but I think this is a deeper conversation. What, what are, we're paying a lot of money to improve this, so that they can hold a larger rodeo and make it more self-sustaining. So, I think we quit budgeting their seventy thousand dollar donation. We use it to upgrade these arena, these grounds. And they give us a budget to, you know, see what the income is.
Big issue now, I could see down the road is gonna be parking. Parking's gonna get real challenging. We'll have to use the.
It is, I mean, you look at cameras, the park, you know, it's, yeah, they, they end up, you know, down through the, some, you know, and people walk, you know. I don't, you know, I don't know what, I don't, you know, the property on the side of the railroad tracks who owns that, I mean. I know they're not, have been reluctant to let people set up parking out there, but there's, that's a huge area that. Is, it almost seems unreasonable not to be allowed to use that to park over there.
Opecards don't like what happens over there when people park over there, because people don't take care of it.
Who's, who's that land over there?
Mark Picard.
It's all Picard. And one year we had the four H's asked if they could camp over there. There are campers and they did that and. Something happened, I don't know what, but that was the last year they let them do that, so it's like, well.
Yeah.
It's their land.
Yep, that's true.
Yeah, the fair board meeting next one is on the seventeenth.
Yeah.
I don't know. I would be in favor of going ahead and moving forward with the lights and just getting it all done. Figuring out if we can work with them and who's paying for it, where it's gonna get paid from. I think that needs to be part of the conversation is, and I can kind of use it a bit on with their budget, look like in the past anyway.
Yeah, we need their budget now. I told them I get it, so.
Yeah, cause like I said, I can use portion of the maintenance budget to, you know, towards the lights. Just leave enough in there in case something does come up that we need to, to work on. At the end of the budget here, but I don't really see, like I said, we got the electrical taken care of. We're gonna do. Trying to get a tiny mini excavator so we can get back to dig to get it, one more hydrant. Cause you can't get a hoe or anything back to it. I'm not about to hand dig it anymore.
Oh, that's what Allison was talking about.
Yeah, trying to get back in there, but, um, it's, yeah, we'll get to work somehow.
Um, they asked me about a reader board. Is there any possibility of getting like a reader board down there where you turn off the highway at, um.
Legion? Alan, Legion?
Yeah, the Legion.
Like a permanent reader board?
Just, you know, just pull behind reader boards that you can set there, say, welcome to Valley County, fair and rodeo.
I think that should come out of their budget.
No, that's fine, but I just, do you have any access and know who to get?
I ain't got a clue. I've never, you know. The issue is gonna be for, if it's a permanent or if it's a temporary.
Well, it's just temporary.
I would work with the Legion and we'd probably use theirs for that week. Cause their Legion has an awesome programmable, programmable.
Oh, you turn up the deal up, uh, where they say this is chicken, chicken on Friday.
Exactly. They can punch all that in for that. We can do that for you.
Oh.
And then we don't have to spend all that money.
We're good for something.
I don't know. They would have to have a road permit too from ITD, so I don't know. The ITD would even allow you to have that kind of a temporary board out there.
I'll check with the Legion then, that, I don't even thought of that.
And, well, it's only the ITD, it's only if you put it in there right away. If you keep it off there right away, they don't have any authority over that, so.
I could put it out on the road, but, I mean, it'd have to be set back quite a ways to be outside there.
Put one into the title company and on our side of the property and. Turn right up ahead or something. What else you got?
All I got.
Um, we got, uh, the heat pump replaced up in the second floor, uh, jewelry room. Stuff, um, they gotta do, do a little more with the compressor, something off, but it's, it's all up and installed. That's taken care of. So, we got the two heat pumps, the one in the IT, um, that one, they're done now. Um, R and M Steel is looking into getting a piece of metal to re- replace that piece on the baler. Uh, roll up door, um, I've already been there. I've been contacted by Lakeshore's insurance company. Once I get it done, submit the claim to them for the repair. Um, uh, waiting, um, we have the contract with Great West for the refurbishing up there. Um, it's, um, now it's coming back and forth between our legal department and then with the changes and additions, so. Hopefully that'll get wrapped up this week and I can get it on the agenda to get that signed so we start moving forward with, uh, the work up there and stuff.
Only to put on the agenda to approve those lights for the fairgrounds too, Scott. It's not an action item today, so.
Okay, lots of get next week, get it on. Um. Trying to think what else we're doing. Um, uh, Steve from the weed department contacted me about up there at the community center. Um, they wanna bring some, um, juvenile youths up to work on, um. Improving or repairing the horseshoe pits and stuff, so we got it mowed up there for them. Um, so, and then he asked if we could get some paint, well, you know, so they can paint, but they're gonna pressure wash the, the stuff and, and repaint it. And refurbish that up there and stuff, so, um, work with that and then just, um. Just our general maintenance and stuff around here.
Where are we at on the pavement out here?
What, what's that?
That you were gonna repave this section?
No, that's, um, in this year's capital improvement request for next year.
Didn't we approve that a couple of years ago?
We did, and I don't, you know, I guess I don't know what. We had a signed contract with Granite and they just failed to show. As, you know, it wasn't a big enough project with all their stuff they're doing anymore. They just failed to show up.
You're not talking about the road, you're just telling this parking area?
Yeah, I'm just talking the parking lot in here and that piece, uh, between the, the, the security gates there. And stuff. They're supposed to come, tear it all out. We're gonna regrade it, lower the drain out here so we can kind of get stuff to go to that drain that's out there. And, um.
Doug, when we approved that originally, that was out of the PILT. We had set aside a certain amount of the PILT. Fund that we had for those CIP projects that year. So, is that still allocated within the PILT fund?
Technically, it would be yes, unless the commissioners decide otherwise.
How much?
Has it already though, been identified as part of that reserve or we're not, we haven't really put a reservation on those PILT funds?
You haven't?
Okay.
Not, not officially officially, right?
Remember how much that was, Scott?
I have, I have the file, I have the granite file. I have to go look at it.
They're gonna bring the CIP presentation anyway here soon, so we'll know.
So, I think requested eighty for this year or for two thousand twenty-five budget year.
We had to put it out for bid.
What's that?
We had to put it out for bid.
Would have to. I mean, it's.
And there's a new paving company now.
What's that?
It's up here, a new paving company. They're like Josh, they haul everything out of the valley up here, but there's other companies that are getting into paving up here, so maybe we ought to rebid it and.
Well, I have to, it's always, you, if you try to get a bid so you can do your CIP. For, this is gonna be a year later, it, it doesn't work, you know. Cause you have no idea what oil prices are gonna be with asphalt and, and stuff, so. Based on previous bids I've got from Granite, that's kind of how I do my CIP request, you know.
Have you talked to Josh about, are they gonna come and do it?
That contract was two years ago, you know, they're not, or that deal was, they just.
So, it's in the CIP again this year and I'm assuming they're coming here in the next couple of weeks, so.
You know when the city's gonna start on the sidewalk? I thought they were including that this summer.
I don't know what the, someone, they were, Mitch said, but he came back, they were pressure washing or something out there this, on Friday or something. I don't know what they're doing. Um, I still need to actually talk with an individual who called me several months ago, cause they're gonna have to keep our entrance open while they're doing it. Cause we only have the one secure entrance and we can't move. I can't see us moving it down to this end of the building to find out people. Metal detector and everything else, so they're gonna have to work on weekends or nights or do half of it and keep access open to our secure entrance.
I would imagine they would tear it out and record on the weekends or something.
Well, they gotta put the geothermal in it though, I think, doesn't, the sidewalk. Part of that deal is they're gonna put the geothermal heating in it to, and keep it melted off. So, they've gotta tear it up and lay tubing. It's not gonna be a tear it out and overnight deal. Okay, anything else? I can't think of anything. I'm sure there is, but. What are they, what are, um, what are you gonna do about signage down at the merit title building now for the county? We, we leaving the signage and merit title out there till they're gone in February or. And then look at what kind of design we wanna put down there for county departments that are gonna be there and stuff.
Right now, merit title is in the number one position on that whole building. Till they're gone and then we can go and do lots of big things after that. You got anything scheduled with them to have them? No, Oki was gonna talk to them and I don't know if they've, he's ever set up a date or not.
Oh, yeah, cause Oki was gonna set a deal with their guy that's in charge of the maintenance there.
And working on BOE until.
Once we get through BOE, then he'd love to look them back up like these.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott, for our views.
Here, we're gonna take a quick five-minute breaks. Our next agenda item is public relations, so we'll, you're ready back here in about five minutes. Here we're going to take a quick five minute breaks. Our next agenda item is public relations. So we'll, you're ready back here in about five minutes.
Why up there? Um, okay.
Yeah.
So what that means with those um, impressions that we talked about, what we're averaging is on any given day, uh, two thousand twenty-seven impressions are being served up. So people are seeing our content two thousand twenty-seven times per day. So that's not bad. Um, that's definitely.
My social media is so huge and.
Yeah. Well, though I think the, the big key, and it's always hard because I look a lot at, you know, the, the next number has engagements, you know, reactions and comments and shares and clicks and things like that. And those are great, but it, even if people don't take action, they're obviously seeing it. We're serving it up two thousand people a day, basically, which is amazing. So.
And then everybody shares. I share every one of our posts, so it hits everybody that looks at me also.
Yep.
So it's.
The more we get, it's fantastic. Um, our engagement rate is five point one percent. It's a little bit down. A lot of times our engagement rate for the county depends on what content we're sharing. Some is not conducive to a whole lot of interaction. It's like informational, so that's okay. Um, I'm never too worried about that. Five percent engagement rate is still pretty high. Uh, if we're looking at our demographics, uh, for Facebook, we are basically anyone thirty-five years and older is our, is our demographic on here. Um, women slightly outweigh men here. Um, fifty-two percent women, forty-one percent men, then there's some that are unspecified. Um, geography, as you would expect, for the social stuff is really concentrated. Um, Boise being number one, McCall, Meridian Cascade, and Nampa are the top five. That's for social media. Um, on our website, it's a little different. It's like we go through like Salt Lake, Portland. It's funny how, how it, it's broader. Some of that can be attributed to like where your IP address routes, but usually it, it pings you correctly on where you're actively accessing the site from. So it's kind of interesting. What I, what I think that tells us is that we have sort of a broader audience. With Facebook, it's a little more localized. With the website, we're much broader. So, um, overall, I feel like we're good. We're in a good direction. Um, I think we still have a good system with the departments and checking in. Um, you know, people are sending me stuff when they need things published, uh, which is great. I ask once a month and so we've been, we've been just kind of carrying on. Uh, I do have a report for the last thirty days, if we want to get a little specific here. Um, impression wise, we're at forty-four thousand people for the last thirty days. Uh, we've added forty-four new followers in the last thirty days. Um, again, the top post was the road washout and then the second was that big long post about just road construction season and that graphic that ITD had sent over with. All the projects planned from Eagle to New Meadows. Otherwise, I mean, it's all pretty standard stuff. Um, our engagement rate was good. Um, for the last thirty days, we were actually, um, at five point eight, so a little higher than our six-month average. Again, a lot of it depends on what content we share.
Have you heard anything on the, uh, Rainbow Bridge? Any comments, saw people yet?
Not yet. I drove by there. Uh, they, they hadn't, they didn't have the road closed. They were doing a lot of like work on the side, but we didn't get stopped there, so we'll see. It's one of those.
I'm kinda curious how the public's gonna take, you're gonna take that out? Oh my God.
I know.
So they are up here. Is it this week, next week? It's like in the next couple of weeks, having a community meeting. So we'll see how many people show up, um, for that conversation.
You're gonna publish something about that one?
Um, that, actually, that might be a good thing.
Maybe something to push out. Rainbow Bridge.
Yeah.
They're just gonna make it a safer place to go across. Faster, faster, faster. Oh, yeah.
The other thing you might put out, Tan rack, is having their open house.
Okay. Is that for the Marina project?
It's the, I think it's for the expansion.
Okay.
That's on the ninth, July ninth at six. That would be a good conversation.
Perfect.
Um, I don't know. ITD is supposed to be up here right away. Oh, ITD community meeting is July seventeenth at four o'clock.
Four P M.
I don't have where it's at. For some reason, I think it's the American Union Building.
July seventeenth?
Yeah.
Perfect.
What was I just gonna tell you? Oh, do we have any, um, connections to the ITD webcams on any of our websites anywhere?
We do. They're, um, it's on the, um, I think it's part of the area webcams. It shows the roads as well. I think we hook into the, like on Little Donner.
Little Donner.
Uh, yeah, like that one. And I think there's one more.
Okay.
Smith Ferry.
Smith Ferry.
Yep.
Smith Ferry, Little Donner, and the Lowsky Hill.
Lowsky Hill pass. I can triple check.
You get to have those front and center. That would also drive people there.
I think that is the area, that, I think those are listed on the area webcams. We have several and then some are like a little more recreation. I think like the May Marina one might be on there.
About our community?
Or Shu Ben Hill.
Or Shu Ben Hill.
Smith Ferry, Little Donner, Goose Creek, McCall Airport, Recreation Webcam, which is tight a slot, and then Johnson Creek Airstrip, all on our website.
There we go.
So where did you find it out?
Area webcams, under the Road and Bridgeman.
Under the Road and Bridge.
Also, I think the number four hit page on the website.
I want some.
I'm sorry, number five.
Do you have any? I don't know.
In Flash?
In Flash.
Okay, well, that's good to know. We should put that out, you know, if you want to connect, you know, just tell people how to connect through our website. The more people we drive for a lot of different reasons, the more they touch our website and might look at other things.
It might also be behoove us, like, you know, we have like the, I think there's six, if I remember right, the buttons on the bottom. Um, you know, with the meeting dashboard and the GIS portal and things like that. But in those quick links, the top hit pages to me are what should, like, if that's what people are looking for, that's what people are accessing, it might be good to just make sure we have a quick link on the, on the homepage. So I'll double check those pages and just see and then chat with IT about if they want to make that change. Page. Perfect. Awesome. Anything else?
I'll get you a road update here pretty quick.
Perfect.
We've had a pretty busy month.
Thanks. You were telling me, uh, the last of Dan was like, Craig, is there another stomach open? Are you looking at dead one?
I got a good video of me going over the.
Good, good.
Love that.
And get, and get her picture of Dan.
Kindly Creek, uh, since we do have that drone footage.
I saw that.
Of interest.
Yeah.
Population to know kind of where it went.
Yeah, it's, it amazed me and Dan.
Yeah.
A four thousand pound covert made it.
And all the twists and turns all the way down.
That was amazing.
Crazy.
Sticking on the Road and Bridge, it might be kind of.
But it might be a, an opportunity for a link or something.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I'm, uh.
I didn't know those things floated.
Yes, right there.
We're about ready to find out. Battery started going.
Yeah, I was gonna get underneath, uh, kinda get close enough so I could see through it, but my battery started kicking off and I thought, I better get this thing.
We have two lost things now.
Exactly. That's what Jeff says. If that thing hits a tree, I'm not getting it.
Awesome. All right. Well, let me know if you need anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to agenda. Next is Road and Bridge. Jeff, Dan, come on up.
Yep. Perfect.
Plugging in your email address.
Perfect. Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want me to start? You want me to start?
You guys figured that out.
That's the toughest question you bring to us today.
That's the toughest question besides what came about this morning, so.
Chrissy, you taking the heat on that?
Yeah, thanks.
Can I ask Chris on that? It's, and.
So basically, we're not any farther than where we were a week ago with him, but I'll, I'll, I'll give him a little bit of money to get that site brushed out, because it'll help, it helps us do.
Sure.
Why is there not a process for when, like, we lose something like that? There's not a process for being able to go back in and fix that? Why? Is it because it's a federal thing?
No, you're, you're dealing with waters of the United States.
Right.
They have fish in them. They have aquatic organisms in them. And you can't just go throw a covert in a body of water without getting in trouble.
It came out of a body of water and we didn't get in trouble.
No, that was Mother Nature.
Oh, so that, it's an act of God. It's okay.
If you purposely take an excavator bucket and put it in the creek to, to bed, to bed the new covert, we're breaking every rule of the book. So we've, we gotta get a four oh four permit to back us up. We gotta explain to them in very, very clear detail on what we are doing. How long are we gonna be doing it for? What are we gonna do with the water? Are we gonna divert it away from that? Are we gonna coffer dams? What kind of material are we gonna use? It's, it's a process and it's not very fast.
We still get the excavator in there and still do it anyhow.
Yes, but we have a permit from somebody higher up than any of us that says, you're good to go.
Last time we didn't do it correctly, we've been waiting on Stib night reembarking.
Yeah, I did it correctly, but they were concentrating on my emergency four oh four permit. If I would've went back in with a, nobody told me I had to get a second permit. I didn't have anybody in my office to help me. Um, okay, back to roads. We're good with the Patty flat. You guys know where we're at on that. We had a pulverizer working pretty much all last week, starting the Friday before. We pulverized the three roads in Wagon Wheel, Lake Trail, Cascade, Wildwood. We will be repaving those probably the week after next. Wait for everybody to leave after the fourth.
Are they on just, so you've already pulled the pavement, so they're just driving on the?
We didn't, we didn't pull it. We pulverized it.
You pulverized?
We turned it back into three-quarter inch rock.
It's a good drivable surface.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Everybody's so happy with what they got, but now people are complaining about the dust. We gotta get a water truck in there a couple of times a day, um, first thing in the morning and hopefully we can hit it to get around noon or one o'clock. At that road, we did Hill House Loop. And.
Gold Dust.
No, Gold Dust was under a contract. We had nothing.
That's a different program?
That's already paved. That is awesome. Yes. Davis Creek's all done. West Valley Wisdom got drowned. That was the, I don't know, Wednesday, Thursday of last week. Then we went and pulverized the three point one miles on, on Lit Creek from basically the boat ramp out to Snowden. Our service said about time. We couldn't, we couldn't keep up with it. It was just flat. We're not gonna repave that this year. We'll just kind of wait for some funding to come around and we'll repave it here. Or Dan's, we're talking about the BST treatment, which is the double triple chip seal. That's what was on that road to begin with thirty years ago.
So what, how does that work, Dan? Is that like chip seal and do another layer and then another layer?
Yeah, it's just a, essentially a double coat.
Is there like a pavement in that oil?
So it'll act like, it'll seal it, so you, you can use it. It'll be a little bit better than gravel, but not quite as good as, as asphalt.
Is it dusty?
No, it doesn't.
It's pavement?
Because it actually has some, some oil to it. Like it comes out about an inch of pavement, basically. Yeah.
Interesting.
It's got a good base under it. It'll hold. We've seen some good, um, responses from other, uh, agencies that have done it. Um, I'm trying to get the actual, um, nation of one that I kind of worked on to, to make sure that it kind of falls in line with what we want to do here. So, um, because I think it'll, in a lot of areas where there's a lot of traffic, you know, to, to try to do something like this will help that dust. It will help the drivability of it all. It will help it seal it. It does have some, um, ability to do pre-saw, uh, reduction in certain areas. It just depends. So, uh, there's a lot of good applications for it, so I'm hopeful that something like that can. And it's, it's recently brought. It's probably about a quarter of the price of. Yeah. Three inches of asphalt. So that, that stuff around Lit Creek, I think they put that down in the mid to late eighties. We've overlaid certain areas. We've chip sealed it, but now it's, it's met its lifespan and we don't have enough money to repave three point one miles, because you've seen what the contracts came in at for what we did. It's expensive, but our crew, we, we got a good pavement crew.
Cool.
Hopefully we start paving the week after Fourth of July. They wanted to start Wagon Wheel next week and I said, there's gonna be too much traffic. Let's just hold off another week, wait for everybody to go home or most of the people to go home. Other than that, we're, we're getting the rock covered in High Valley. We started on that last week. We'll finish up this week. People quit. They won't complain about the rocks now, but I was almost a little afraid something was gonna happen in the canyon bad this weekend and.
Be one of these.
I wanted to get it done by Fourth of July, which looks like we're gonna make it. Because something bad, say knock on wood, hopefully it doesn't happen, something in the canyon where everybody diverts around, no one comes in. What else we working on? Um, I did get ahold of Carlson's helicopters out of Riggins this morning. They're willing to fly that covert back to the road, but they need a weight on it, so I'm waiting on a weight.
Is that a four-foot covert or five-foot?
Uh, no, it's about a seven-foot squash covert.
Oh, man, big, big guy.
Sixty-two inches high and a hundred and seven inches wide and forty feet long.
Was it, what do you guess, a three-ton?
No, I'm not even saying, I'm, I'm guessing about three thousand pounds.
Okay.
Three to four. He said it'd be a first for them too. They've never flown culverts, but they've flown solid pipe.
Do they have to dump it first if there's any gravel or anything in it?
Oh, yeah. That, that's how they'll fly. They won't fly it.
Fly, they'll.
Flat, because it'll sit there. If we lift up on the upper end, which is kind of already out of the water a little bit, we probably sling it right there, drill a hole in it and put some grabbing eyes or something, some clevises, something in it, but I think.
Make sure you get some video of that.
Yeah, I think that'll be cool. He's gonna fly his drone the same time the helicopter. Oh, I know.
Jeff, did we figure out why that did it? I mean, was it just not clearing?
It was the amount of water.
The amount of water.
Yep, and the log could've came down in that amount of water and plugged that whole three giant culverts up and that's the covert that decided to take out. There was nothing to prevent it. It was just.
So have we seen this before there? I mean, you don't feel their bridge is.
Not there.
An appropriate fix? Okay.
No. Bridge, bridge would be appropriate, maybe sometimes if it comes down here in ten or fifteen, twenty years to replace those culverts to look at putting a bridge in and raising it up a little bit higher, because it is prone. We usually take the backhoe up in there every couple of years and remove logs and stuff that have been across them and something could've came down this winter, early spring, during this gully washer. So I can't remember what the CF, the cubic feet per second measurement was on Lit Creek, but it was on the pavement that same day.
Oh, my goodness.
At Lit Creek, just below Snowden, it was on the pavement, which. The only other time I've ever seen that on the pavement is when Brown's Pond broke. And there's a bridge that's going out, kind of where Zamzo's houses are out there. One of my friends is built, working on building a house out there or remodeling or something. They were told when they replaced that bridge after Brown's Pond broke, everybody's seen it, including me, and said, you get that bridge up another three feet while the water was hitting the bridge. A friend was on the bridge watching the water. The log came down and hit the bridge. Luckily, it's still there. He turned around, yelled at his crew and said, get your stuff and get out of here.
I said, did you tell him he was a dummy hut?
And that was three days difference from when the Brown's Pond Dam broke.
Wow.
Fifteen years ago or whenever it was. Three days difference. Same month, same week, just three days off. Other than that, we're, uh, yeah, we're in summer mode. We're getting ready to head up Lit Creek with blades and water trucks. We'll just, that blade there will just keep on going. I won't see them again until September.
Well, I went out and drove the Tamarack Road from the roundabout south. There, they've got about three saw spots they're still trying to dig out, but the rest of it.
Oh, they're still up there working on them?
Burned up. I went and looked at the employee housing units. That was really cool.
Yeah.
I would recommend you guys go out and check those out.
Those Quonset huts.
What a great idea.
Customized Quonset huts.
Yeah. And there was people everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my God.
This weekend was horrible up here. Um, I took our side-by-side into Deadwood Saturday with some friends. Yeah, videos of playing on the snow. There was a little, little Lexus all-wheel drive stuck that luckily somebody came behind us with a pickup, pulled them out, but pickups are going across it. Jeeps are going across it. It's pretty hard underneath. It's just, it's breaking up, but, um, I'll go look Wednesday. I'm taking Thursday off, but Wednesday I'll run back there and take a look. And if we got it finished to open it, we'll go back beginning of next week and punch a hand through it.
It's a hole.
Other than that, oh, one more question. Uh, came up in payroll this morning. The day off, it's, it's kind of petty, but it kind of bugs me also. Your certificate you gave everybody for a day off, it says a day off. Is that a ten-hour day or an eight-hour day? Because we're on ten-hour days.
I hate our payroll system, Jeff. Don't give us one more day. It's a problem.
You only get eight hours out of ten. You have to show up for two hours. I'm kidding.
Well, that's the question. Do we, do we make the employees use two hours of PTO to make up the difference? Or is it a day off? Doesn't matter if it's an eight-hour day or a day.
Made my head hurt. Our payroll system.
Think about it. You don't have to answer it right now.
Jeff, do we still have the program? A guy was talking, asking me, like we did down on, was it, uh, sixty where we allowed the guy to pave in front of his house?
And that's, that's up to you guys. It's, it's a three hundred foot minimum length.
Three hundred foot minimum?
We don't have a twenty-foot and then a sixty-foot with nothing and then another forty-foot in front of this guy's house.
Oh, I see.
We, we kind of decided when that gentleman wanted to do that, it was three hundred foot minimum.
Okay. The reason, the other reason I ask is I had my road oiled and it was eighteen hundred bucks for six hundred feet.
For pavement.
And it's, but it was six hundred more than last year.
Oh, everything's, everything.
I mean, it went up six hundred dollars for the last three years, every year.
Mag went up, calcium went up, everything went up.
I'm thinking, maybe I ought to pave it.
There you go. We'll sell ten cows and pave it.
Well, you only have to sell one cow a month.
But the thing is with that road, I'm not gonna allow, um, it's gonna take a lot of work for us to get that road prepped to where, I mean, we gotta get some kind of a base down.
There's no base in it. It's the oldest road in the valley. I'm so disappointed.
That's what every farmer says.
It is. It's the oldest road in the valley.
What does Dan have to bring to us today?
There, there had to have been another road to get to your road.
Well, I came in through Smith Ferry and up through Round Valley and then came by the Oclar Creek. State's Code stopped there just south of me. Came by there. It's.
Called Hasbrook Lane then?
Hmm, I don't know what it was called.
That was not the oldest road in the county then. Okay, that's all I needed.
But it went up to Kennedy Road.
We have to listen to these two all the time.
Come on, man. You gotta put some money on that road.
Give Dan, give Dan the time he needs.
Oh, I appreciate it. Uh, I have been, uh, learning a lot from this gentleman here and I really appreciate his guidance in a lot of this because I'm kind of swimming, not really understanding the environment or even the location. So I, I appreciate his, his guidance through all of this. Um, I wanted to kind of circle around our, uh, emergency funding application through LTAC did not get approved. So the, the hope to get the, the cost of the, uh, covert purchase, I'm hoping that we can pluck it out and, and put it in place, so. Um, from my understanding of the review of the application, we have a lot, and he's been doing a good job, having a lot of emergency funds set aside. And so that was the component of why we didn't get selected. So when you do have that, or if there is an explanation of those emergency funds in more detail of the set asides of why that's there, uh, then it might be more successful in the future.
So the LTAC was for the Canale Creek thing?
Yeah, Ki- Kindley Creek.
Well, it's good to know.
Yeah. Um, so as part of what I've been kind of trying to get familiar with is some of the bridge work that's being done. Um, and this is the, uh, Little Bee, projects where Mud Creek, Willow Creek, and Kindley Creek. This is all through LTAC and they're administering the, the projects there. Uh, through, I believe Keller was selected. We're supposed to get an agreement forthcoming on Kindley. Uh, so as soon as that comes, we'll present it to commissioners for signatures on that.
Different Kindley Creek than.
Yeah.
This is actually a bridge on the same creek, but it's in a different part of the county.
Gold Fork and Kindley?
No, Kindley Creek is where the covert washed out up high.
Yeah.
But this is a bridge that crosses that same creek down.
Down Gold Fork. Yeah, Gold Fork. Um, and then, um, we've got Lake Fork in the program for rehabilitation. Uh, it's in the program for twenty twenty-nine. That's for design. Uh, it's, whenever you do federal aid, just consider it's always ways out there longer than you would hope. So when, when we do select them in the future, we have to consider at least five to six years before we can actually get started on something.
I thought Lake Fork was headed for twenty.
This is.
Twenty-seven.
Fort Creek, right before you turn up the Boulder Lake Road.
Oh.
This is where I'm helping him.
The nuances of everything. You know, we used to always, we used to always have a, a fun with Elk Creek. Elk Creek is everywhere in the state, everywhere. So you have to be very specific. Thanks again for.
Lake Fork Creek, we have three bridges that cross over Lake Fork Creek. One, one on Farm to Market, one on East Lake Fork and one on Sheline.
So is this a bridge there, Jeff, that you're talking about, the one up Boulder Lake?
Before you head up the.
Is that a bridge replacement job there?
House rehabilitation, not rehabilitation.
Okay.
Whatever that consists of.
Um, and then I did check on, uh, Flap, uh, Lake Shore Project. Uh, it's in twenty twenty-eight. So nothing's probably gonna get started on it until probably twenty-seven on any agreements. So it takes a while for that to get started. So we're a little bit always on that.
Did you guys fix that pavement? We had terrible pavement issues. You went and overlaid a little bit, didn't you?
Oh, Boulder Lake?
No, on Lake Shore.
Lake Shore.
Yeah, we're gonna overlay that. We are.
You are going to. It hasn't been done yet.
Just gotta put a one inch on it just to.
Okay.
And when is that?
This summer? Yeah, it should be more hard. We're gonna get all the roads we pulverized first. And overlay on that.
Yeah, it's one of those things that, you know, um, as agencies look at trying to get federal funds, just keep in mind that you'll still have to maintain it. You'll still have to keep it up for at least five years, so.
Sheline has the same kind of situation, I think. I don't know if that's on the list, Adua.
Where?
Sheline? Sheline?
Sheline, where that is.
And a Creek Creek. Where, where are you from?
Yeah, Sheline being the fall apart, that's something we need to look at.
You guys fell at Sheline. They pronounce their name Sheline, so therefore it's a little tough.
And then, uh, I've, uh, been, uh, asked to look at the dust abatement permit. Uh, I think we've, we've established one. They just want me to take a, a, a new, fresh look at it to make sure that the dust abatement permit, this is where, um, an individual can come in, do, uh, the permit, do dust abatement, uh, as part of their, um, improvements around, around the road.
Because that's considered in the same category as snow removal and road construction, so.
And I didn't get a permit to plow my road.
You don't get a permit to plow it either.
Well, they'll level it or grade it or do all the work I have to do on it.
We gotta make sure everybody's on task now for a permit. This is gonna be one of those things, so.
And Oki did send us back that ordinance, that permit had everything on one. We didn't need to add to it, I think. Part of that conversation.
It's a separate standalone permit, so I, I've been just kind of looking at it and then I was gonna take a look at what has been done in other locations as well.
The homeowner's not doing the application. They'll go through North American or whatever, just like you do. North American, we've got their.
North American, we've got their insurance information to do this type of stuff, but we need to know where this stuff is. Because I need to put a stop to some of it because they're making loopholes out of their road. Make all right, yeah, that's what happens.
And then. The plan this week is to get on Four Corners FEMA application to get, hopefully get some. Get that turnaround to answer some of the questions so we can get reimbursement on what happened.
You're talking about the culverts on West Mountain?
Yeah, that it's like I was telling Dan McKenzie. She did the application with my help. And she decided to go elsewhere and all of a sudden it was thrown back at Doug and then Doug threw it at us and now I'm throwing it at Dan. I don't, I don't quite know where. Where we're at on it.
Okay, the problem is I think the deadline's passed.
No, it's actually the sixth, July sixth. So I'm hoping, I've been corresponding with Robin from.
Sorry.
She, she knows that it should be coming hopefully this week. So. And then Kindley Creek, you know about the four oh four permit there. That's the hope is to try to get that started this week. I'm still in the process of looking through the master transportation plan. There are several. Collectors that have to get established. Statewide, so this is where FHWA approves a lot of updates to. Collectors that were reestablished as either a minor or major collector as part of your CIP or, or transportation plan updates. So. Looking through that, I did last time look at part of West Mountain. And. It'll be slow go because it's, I have to go out and physically look at everything because of how the plan is. I did review, this is where I'm trying to take some of the workload off, off of this gentleman. So. The building. Cemental, ninety percent cemental. Came in, I reviewed it last Friday. I had a few comments and I've talked with. Brian Oki about the bid document, front edition of it. I gave him my comments, so we're trying to. Establish the legal comments and my comments into one cemental. So. Hopefully that gets enough information to. The Dana. From, from the architect so that they can hopefully still stay on, on schedule to get it out for advertisements soon.
Do we dig a hole yet?
I'm sorry.
We dug a hole yet?
No, I, this is another thing I said as part of my comments, I would like to incorporate that back into the. Into the overall project. So we're gonna, we're gonna include it back in the project. I can't find enough time to go do it. I'm trying to help him, not. And then, yeah, I'm just evaluating like the BSTs as well. So I think those are going to be a bonus in certain areas. What does BST stand for? Bituminous surface treatments. That's BST. Bituminous asphalt.
Love my pay group's fault.
It's a chip seal. It's a glorified chip seal. Just think of it that way.
That's the one you were talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Hey, sounds great. I'm glad that you're taking heat off of Jeff. He needs it.
Well, yeah, I'm actually sleeping Sunday nights now instead of worrying about what I, everything I gotta do Monday.
All right, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great week.
You too.
And we're gonna jump our agenda a little bit and go to our next action item. This is West Heather Fuel Reduction Beds. Stephanie, welcome.
You are styling today.
Ulegiate too.
I'm sorry.
You have just one here. You have more?
You should have one for Baron Loper. I know Kayla dropped one off this morning.
I don't know where that one is. This is all I have.
And I talked to her while she was standing outside of the office.
Can you give me a moment? Yeah, we'll give you a second.
And then, so D and D did not put anything in.
And move the second part of your permit in here then. So D and D didn't do anything?
And Baron gave his bid to. Lady, Mara Mara, who that was when she was out on a project with him.
Oh, and I have a. Waiting for that bid, do we want to approve the minutes?
Yeah, I'm thinking we're still on. So while we're waiting for Doug to get the second bid, here we can pass those out.
No, that's just for you and Doug to sign.
Well, this is the contracts. Okay. We're gonna go back and approve the meeting minutes of June tenth and June seventeenth. If you guys have a chance to look at those.
I did. I gave Doug my corrections. So I would move to approve the meeting minutes of June tenth and June seventeen.
Second. Got a motion second approved, June tenth and June seventeen minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I'll let Doug know who made the motion.
So the gentleman being discussed is not going to give us further bids?
Well, I had a long conversation with his wife because she was less emotional. And I said, look, I said, probably maybe if you'd bid two thousand or something. They might have given you another shot at it, but when you come in at low wall and you know you can't make it. That's just good business for them to say no. I said, I said, honestly, there are more bidders, we think, in town. And it's hard to let it slide. We've needed him because we didn't have a lot of options. Now we have more options, so you gotta pick it up.
Smart. Okay, you guys got your pins ready?
Yes, sir.
This bid is from Baron Loper. This is for ten point seven acres. And the bid amount is two thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars.
Per acre?
Per acre.
It's twenty six thousand four eighty two fifty.
Forty two fifty.
Okay. Okay, the next one. This one is from John Lydriksen. Specialized Land Works and this bid is for three thousand four hundred and fifty per acre.
That is thirty six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Okay, the next bid. Is from. Caitlin Miller, Jeffrey Miller Excavating. Out of Council, this bid came in at three thousand one hundred and eighty five, three one eight five.
Is thirty four thousand seventy nine dollars and fifty cents.
And the last one is from, I think it's D and D.
Which one?
David Stillwell.
D and D Tree Service.
D and D.
I'm sure we do D and D.
And this bid came in for two thousand three hundred and seventy five.
Twenty three seventy five?
Two, three, seven, five.
Just twenty five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, so that's the total of the bids. So no.
What's your pleasure?
No cooks in.
I, I showed him our prices from last week. I think it might have scared him off a little bit. Uh, no, and I have no complaints with the order of bid if you choose to accept the lowest one.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the bid from Baron, nope, from D and D Tree Service for two thousand three hundred and seventy five per acre. Total of twenty five thousand four hundred and twelve fifty.
Second that. A motion is second to approve the contract with D and D Tree Service. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Anything else you want to talk about?
I'll be back at nine fifteen next Monday morning to do it again. I'm just not exactly sure where yet. Perfect. We're doing well on the Bear Basin contract that Jeffrey Miller is doing. It's a little loggy. But she's shown that she can do the cleanup.
Who was that? Ben Stanley over the weekend? I went back on the back country. Man, I cannot believe how much down there is. It is just. Never catch up.
Have you been up to Deadwood Reservoir? That's another one that'll blow your socks off.
That's just crazy that, I mean, it's just like the forest is refined and ready, the stuff on the ground, the pad. Absolutely.
Yeah, just a fact for moving money off West Mountain.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, this being the last item on our agenda, we're gonna break for lunch.
Like we voted on the minute while you were gone.
Oh, yeah. What's your one back here one?
Cherry made the second.
Motion.
Or made, no, Cherry made the motion. I made the second.
So Mara and I are gonna meet Wednesday with the Forest Foundation about our work over the years.
Oh, good. The Forest Foundation? They were at the meeting when I was there. Yeah.